All right. Good evening and welcome to the regular open session meeting of the Temecula Valley Unified School District Board of Education on June 10th, 2025 at 5:31 PM. In attendance this evening are Governing Board Dr. Melinda Anderson, Mr. Emil Barham, Dr. Joseph Komroski, Mr. Stephen Schwartz, Mrs. Jennifer Wiersma, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Gary Woods, and the Executive Team. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Woods, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Would you please rise, put your hand over your heart? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Board President comments, there are none this evening, and then items considered in closed session for action in open session. Mr. Barham?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the recommendation of the Administrative Hearing Panel regarding the following student expulsion matter, number 217208, suspended expulsion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linnae, can you please call the roll?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, so here are some items that were motioned in closed session back on May the 27th that actually did get read out in open session, but something went wrong with the live stream, so we're going to read them out again. So, here goes. With regard to case number 2025010623, it was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by...
That was today's. This wasn't May 26th. This was today's.
This was today's? Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
And sorry, this was...
Yeah, what is that?
Steve Schwartz.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so this was today's, excuse me. So, with regard to case number 2025010623, it was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Schwartz to approve the compromise and release agreement, and that motion was adopted unanimously with a vote of 5-0. And this is from the May 27th Special Board Meeting with regard to existing litigation case CVSW2306224. It was moved by Member Komroski and seconded by Member Schwartz to suspend Resolution 202223-21 of the Temecula Valley Unified School District prohibiting the teaching of critical race theory. That motion was adopted with a vote of 5 to 0. It was moved by Member Komroski and seconded by Member Schwartz to move forward with filing a petition for a rehearing for case number CVSW22306224. The motion was adopted with a vote of 3 to 2 with the following votes cast: Schwartz, no; Wiersma, yes; Komroski, yes; Barham, no; Anderson, no. Next. It was moved by Member Komroski and seconded by Member Schwartz to form a CRT Subcommittee with Komroski, Barham, and Advocates for Faith and Freedom to rewrite the CRT policy to make it satisfy the courts. The motion to approve was adopted with a vote of 5-0. And last, it was moved during the closed session on May the 27th that the Board of Education and Advocates for Faith and Freedom agreed to a compromise of fees in the amount of $50,000 to resolve all district liabilities under their contract. That motion was approved by Board Majority Consensus.
Mr. Barham, good reading. A point of order, though, on the second motion, you said it was adopted, it was denied because it was a motion to move forward to file a petition, and it was denied.
All right, excuse me.
So it was not adopted?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, you're right.
The vote outs are correct, though.
Yeah, okay, so let me redo it. Sorry about that. It was moved by Member Komroski and seconded by Member Schwartz to move forward with filing a petition for the rehearing for case CVSW2306224. The motion was not adopted with a vote of 3 to 2, with the votes being cast in the following way: Schwartz, no; Wiersma, yes; Komroski, yes; Barham, no; Anderson, no, and I apologize. That's it.
Do we have any spotlights today?
Not seeing any.
No? Okay. Do we have any student comments? All right.
Do we have any public comments on consent items?
What?
No student. You have right of...
On consent items or not consent items? Sorry, Josh Sherling.
I think they're all me today. The item was referring to the Advocates for Faith and Freedom in the contract. That it was. I realize, going back through the original contract, part of it is why I didn't get an answer about the fees that we were up to at the point was you guys had a gag order in there to where the Board, the client, couldn't actually make public comments about the case or the contract. So, at a minimum, the transparency of what you guys have decided, and I guess to the 3 to 2 vote, I really appreciate. I appreciate the effort to work through those issues. Critical race theory is something that we need to discuss, good or bad, taught or not taught. We should be able to have civil conversation. So, I'm excited to see what the Subcommittee is able to pull out, but thank you for your efforts of working through that and getting to any of those things about CRT. I'd love to have a debate with you guys, just for fun, because, yay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, and I'm going to ask for...I'll just go down the row and I'll ask, Mrs. Wiersma, did you have items that you wanted to pull from the consent item, consent calendar?
I know I'm interested in pulling and talking a little bit more about number 22, which is the contract with Magic School AI.
Mr. Barham?
Okay, I'm going to pull number 6.
I want to talk about, sorry.
And I want to pull item 15. 22 is already pulled as well, and item 55.
55. What was the first one that you were going to?
15.
Turn it in. Oh, yeah, 15, and then 55.
Okay. Let's go ahead and approve everything minus, or do you guys want to discuss? Okay.
No.
So I move to approve consent items 1 through 58 that were not pulled for separate action and tabled. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linnae?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, the motion was adopted unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item number 6, conference travel request. Who pulled that item? Mr. Barham?
Okay, so I am struggling to approve this request because I see this unless I can be convinced otherwise that this is non-essential travel.
Okay, we have pulled that up. This is number 6?
Yeah.
There's two S's on here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't see going to a conference regarding restorative practice to be essential travel.
Is this one? Is this number 7?
Is it 7 or 6? That's 6.
Mr. Barham, I can speak to this since Ms. Dais is not here.
Okay, go for it.
She has prepared me well.
Okay, go for it.
So, SSS has removed most of their conference travel plans that they actually had planned for this coming year unless there's a conference that provided legal updates or anything that was mandated for individuals. This conference originally had 12 attendees, and so Ms. Dais and her team actually scaled it back to just two administrators who are in charge of restorative practices and the oversight of it at all of our different school sites so that we can save money and kind of emulate the trainer-a-trainer model. So, it's scaled back from 10 to 2. Just an additional piece, I think it's important, too, that the state of California and the school discipline policies as we have in place always really makes us look at the other means of correction. And so, we are deeply invested in restorative practices for the last couple of years. To know we have new administrators on our site, we will have some new teachers, we will have some new social workers and counselors that are joining the TVUS team next year. So, a lot of that trainer-trainer model will be to kind of bring everybody up to speed that hasn't had it before.
Can anyone give us a little bit of a synopsis as to what restorative practices means? Because I've definitely heard conflicting opinions, so I don't know if you could further speak to that. I know Mrs. Dais obviously would have had a lot to say, but...
She would have, but I actually think it's a perfect question since our trainer, our most expert trainer is actually here, Ms. Kelly Gradstein, who's a Director in Student Services, who actually is fully trained in restorative practices and actually is kind of spearheading it in the district.
Yeah, absolutely. So, restorative practices is all about building relationships. So, the foundational, the fundamental hypothesis of restorative practices is that human beings will be happier, more cooperative and productive, and more likely to make positive changes in their own behavior when those in positions of authority do things with them rather than to them or for them. And so, for the past several years, like Dr. Velez shared, we've been training all of our sites in restorative practices and really helping them to understand how to build that foundational piece, which is relationships with students and staff, to really understand when behaviors occur, what those root causes are. Rather than saying, we're just going to discipline, we really want to understand where people are coming from and where our students are coming from. So, when you have that restorative piece in place, 80% of the time, you're working on building relationships, and the other 20% of the time, you're reacting to the things that happen normally on a campus. So, just like Dr. Velez said, it's essential that we have other means of correction in terms of responding to the disciplinary concerns that are on our campuses. And within ed code, it does say that we should be implementing restorative justice or restorative practices as a means of correction before we result, not result, but before we go to a suspension. And so, this conference really helps us to expand where we're at. We've provided day one and day two training at all of our sites. It's really giving us the next step in implementation and more strategies and interventions that sites can use in response to building relationships and different things that happen on their campuses.
Can I ask you a yes or no question?
Yeah.
Just real quick. So, we are already implementing restorative practices and it's something we already know what, how to do, and we're doing it. Okay.
Absolutely.
And we've been doing it for years.
Well, we are in year three of implementation right now, and so, we're using this conference to help us move forward and continue the momentum we've already started.
And, oh, go ahead, Dr. Komroski.
Thank you. I know there's different elements in restorative practices. Would you say that in this school district, by using this as a vehicle, that we emphasize personal responsibility, character formation?
Yeah.
Parental involvement?
Absolutely. Those are really great questions because there is some misunderstanding that with restorative practices that you remove all accountability. It's absolutely not the case. With restorative practices, we have just as high a level of accountability as we do support. Those are the things that are paired together. Parental involvement is essential in that because if we want to make sure that students are accountable for their behavior, they need to understand what they did wrong and how to repair the harm that was done so that they can restore the relationship that was broken.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, can I look for, before we vote, does anyone want to approve this? One, two. Okay, Linnae, let's make a motion if you want to approve it. Go ahead and make the motion.
I move to approve the conference request for Utah for restorative practices, item 6 in consent.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Linnae, call roll.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
No.
I need to ask a request of the Board. I was distracted as trying to manage the meeting, and I had a few items I wanted to pull. Can I amend and pull those items? Mine were number 8, number 10, 11, and someone already pulled number 22. Is that correct?
Yeah, I had a question, too, since we're still on the item. Mr. Barham, did you have a problem with the content of restorative practices? Is that why you didn't want to send the employee? Trying to figure out what was it?
I've seen restorative practice implemented.
Hmm.
I think that they're doing a great job. I just feel that at this time, because we're under the gun in terms of the budget, and we talked about non-essential travel, that was the big question for me. Is this really essential? And I believe that these individuals, the expertise is already there. I don't see what this training is going to do in terms of helping them come up with strategies to help our students form relationships. I mean, I see the practices already in place. I think that we're doing a great job in that area. I just feel like we have to start drawing the line in certain places, and we had already agreed that non-essential travel would be part of that. So, I mean, it's a subjective call, but in my opinion, this is not essential, and that's why I voted against.
Thanks for sharing.
I think for me, what made the difference is you paring down your staff. That was helpful for me to hear because I think if we're going to have any kind of professional training, we do need to streamline things. So, thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wiersma. Let's go on to item number 8, contract renewal Freshscope Media. It said that there was an invoice attached with a dollar amount, but I did not see an invoice, and I was going to email you and ask for, what is that amount? Can you click on that? So, when it scrolls down, I don't, yeah, pull it up. Maybe it was my bad.
It was me. I'm sorry.
I see a contract, but I don't see an invoice. It said, in the contract, it said, "See attachment A invoice."
I think it says repair course's total.
Okay, okay, that's it. Thank you. I didn't see that. So, I move to approve the contract renewal Freshscope Media. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linnae?
Schwartz?
Oh, sorry, Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, the motion was approved unanimously, and number 6, conference travel, was approved with a 3-2 vote. Next is item 10, contract renewal K-12 Insight for Let's Talk. I just had a question. I noticed there's other platforms. Has an RFP been done for this service? Like, have we looked into the contract renewal for K-12 Insight for Let's Talk? I just, it's a lot of money, so that was my question, is have we shopped around regarding this service?
It's been a really long time since we implemented Let's Talk. I think it's probably been close to like seven, eight years or something like that. An RFP was done initially, and it met the requirement for us to have an anonymous bullying tip line, which it checked that box. We obviously use it for a lot of other things, but for compliance purposes, I know that's why this was initially initiated. I don't think we've done another RFP since, but I'm happy to, you know, look into that if that's something the Board is interested in.
I just noticed there's other companies that have come on the market that provide the exact same services, but I'm looking for Board direction on whether or not they want to spend the time and see if we can cut the costs in Let's Talk. I know sometimes, too, there's an automatic renewal and they just up the price over and over, but now that there's more competition in the market, what does the Board think?
This is the Let's Talk where somebody could give a compliment or a complaint on TVUSD or any site admin, right, the website?
Correct.
I'm for the possibility of cheaper, but I really do like the platform because I've urged parents to use it quite frequently in the last few months. I'm open for a cheaper alternative. But the other thing, too, is if you get a cheaper alternative, you get what you pay for. Some of these IT platforms are archaic or not easy to use, so I'd be also wondering cost, but also efficiency. Like, a parent logging on, or, sorry, not logging on, but getting on and actually, from the first step to the last, and then turn around, you know, hoping it's effective.
And to that point, Dr. Komroski, which is a great one, the cost of transitioning to a new platform and training students, training the community, training parents how to use it, that will be a new transition. So, maybe a meet in the middle might be to only renew it for one year, since it does expire June 30th, and to have a full RFP process done and implemented for July 1st might be difficult. But maybe instead of approving the contract for a three-year period, we approve it for a one-year period and then spend this year really evaluating options.
Does anyone oppose that?
I would agree with that.
So, okay, so we, so I'm in a motion that we approve the contract with Let's Talk for one year and then run an RFP. That was what I was thinking we might want to do.
I'll second it.
Second. Linnae?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Sorry, yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. The motion is approved unanimously. The next is the contract for Inspire Social. I just have a question because we are starting to look at wants and needs. Can you click on the attachment? I just wanted the Board to consider...oh, Jimmy, okay, Mr. Evans. So, I understand we're still doing, we're still paying for advertising and promotion and signs. Mr. Evans, could you just let me know the direction this is headed? And if we're going to be, as a Board, I want to know if we're going to consider scaling these types of expenses back.
Yeah, Let's Talk, we use for all different kinds of things, so it's...
No, not Let's Talk.
Oh, sorry, sorry, my bad. Inspire Social is, we use for multiple things. We use it for, we're finishing up branding, so we only have like a school or two left that's really in the ends of that. But not only that, but everything that we do, whether it's a flyer, things like that, all the designs, everything we use for marketing. So, it's, even though it's one of those things where it's a cost, it's also that balance because we have to market to the community. So, we use this for marketing, for social media, for everything else. So, it's how much money do you want to put in? Because we generate revenue from that marketing side. So, I think it's a balance. And we also use it for when, you know, Dr. Woods and myself might be looking for a graphic that we're going to present to the city. A lot of times, Inspire Social will help us with the graphics and the design for that. So, it's a little bit of a balance, I understand, like, obviously, the concerns with cost, but there is a marketing piece to it as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I was at a site, and maybe it was with you, but the administrators love this company, and they love the person that runs this company.
And with that, we also are always marketing. So, if you look at all the graphics that are on the hallways, all of them on the sides of the school, everything like that, once again, plays into our marketing value and bringing in revenue. So, that's where we look at the balance, where it's not just, we'd love to cut costs, but at some time, we also have to market to our community for, you know, competing schools and things that happen in our community as well as flyers, and want to make sure that we provide the best we can graphically to have the best marketability.
Okay, and I didn't want us to not approve this, but I want, like, I thought it would be an opportunity because I looked at the, all of the budget information that was on the Friday update, including the LCAP, and I know where we're headed as a district. So, I brought up some of these things so that as a district and a Board, we can start being aware of. In the future, we might need to start reconsidering wants and needs and some of these extra things.
And even the contract this year is less than it was last year. So, we already started, just like we were talking earlier.
Scaling back.
So, we're scaling back, and we don't have the same level of cost that we did last year. So, we'll be continuing to scale back as well.
What do you see the trajectory as? I know it's been in place for what, three years or more? So, do you see it?
It just depends on what we use it, because ultimately, it's by need. So, we had internal graphics that we need to generate for all the internal, like, in the hallways of everything else. So, we used, there's a contract for that. Then, we had a flyer that was going out to the community. So, we used Inspire Social to create that flyer and also do the mailers that go out to the community for marketing. So, really, it's kind of piece by piece. Depending on how much we want to push from the marketing side will depend on how large the contract goes. But I believe, I don't want to throw out a number unless Mrs. Lash knows exactly, but we had, it was significantly more last year.
Well, and one thing, if I could just add, or piggyback on what Mr. Evans is saying, is that this is just on an as-needed basis. I think, Dr. Anderson, your point is well taken. We will collectively, as a cabinet, make sure that every time we access this contract, it's for a need versus a want. As he mentioned, I think Chaparral High School is the last school to finalize their marketing, so that's embedded in this cost. And when he's talking about marketing, it's advertising for enrollment, advertising for one, how many times something has been opened, and how many people received these mailers, to make sure that we're getting our money's worth out of this advertisement. So, it's a small amount spent, hopefully, to generate, if we just get two kids, it will pay for itself kind of a thing. So, those are the types of things that we analyze when we're looking at marketing.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the contract with Inspire Social. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Okay, next.
Number 15.
Who was it that requested the contract renewal?
All right. Dr. Woods, do you give me permission to ask Dr. Velez a question about this?
Yes, sir.
All right, Dr. Velez, this won't change my vote. I'll already voted this in. I used TurnItIn. What I've experienced as a professor is TurnItIn recently has not been able to catch AI plagiarism. So, I have to use CopyLeaks, another website, to check AI plagiarism. Just to give you an example, I had a student plagiarize an entire paper, and I know it because I used it and I ran it through CopyLeaks, 100% AI. TurnItIn? 1%. So, there's a deficiency in TurnItIn with this new AI software, which is exponentially developing. And my question is, is there any feedback from the community or from your perspective? It is a good plagiarism software, but I'm not so sure with AI.
So, I don't know if I'm actually the total expert in this area, but what I can say is that I know through our discussions with TurnItIn and what Ms. Ricken and Mr. Ballywag have explored with TurnItIn is it's getting better over time. So, is it probably perfectly where we want it to be in regards to AI? No. But at the same time, the capabilities in terms of checking for ChatGPT and other types of platforms that are used for AI, it is actually progressively getting better. But can I guarantee that it happens 100% of the time? No.
Yeah, and the reason, and I appreciate the response, is because I got 100% AI detection on one website, and TurnItIn gave me .1. I'm like, that's not really good at all. But, okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Dr. Komroski, do you have a motion or an action? Dr. Komraski, do you have a motion or an action?
Yeah, just a motion to approve this.
Okay.
Yeah. I just wanted some more clarity on this, because it's evolving, this whole AI discussion, believe me, yeah. So I motion to approve it.
I wanted to ask one question before you do.
Oh, okay.
Jimmy, do you know anything about this?
If, if, if no, we're going to approve it, it looks like, so, okay.
Anything about it?
Briefly, yeah.
He knows.
The only thing I want to add is that the level of that it's evolving, it's kind of like which one catches which. So just like Dr. Komraski was saying, as one develops and doesn't identify AI, then you have background technology that catches up to it. So it's always going to be a cat and mouse game, and depending on when you check the accuracy on identifying AI, will depend on which is the latest update. So that's all I have to add.
Good, Jimmy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barham. So we have a motion in a second. Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. The next is Contract for Magic School AI.
So, so to piggyback on the AI discussion, I looked at this and.
This is 22?
22. So it's just under 150,000, and on the comments, it said that it was piloted with 40 teachers district-wide. I would love to see that data and what they have to share. I did look up the website. I understand it's teachers who have developed this for teachers, but before voting it through, I know for me, and of course, not as familiar with AI but learning, I'd like more particulars on this, especially how we used it throughout the district, and more feedback.
Okay, and then I pulled this item as well, just because my concern is, at a cost of $144,000, I think there's potential, especially when I see this can be used for teachers that are writing IEPs, is that correct?
Yeah, that is one of the avenues, yes, correct.
So that's where I see the biggest asset is, is not having teachers trying to do IEPs from home or on weekends, because it's going to help expedite that. But do we have more feedback on how that's working?
Jimmy?
Yeah, well, and what we've done too is that this actually helps a lot with two particular areas. One is actually lesson planning for teachers and coming up with, you know, a standard that they are teaching in fourth grade. And they will get activities and different things that are standards-based. So it helps create a lot of that for them. But one of the biggest avenues that we've actually seen it incredibly beneficial is being able to personalize for our diverse learners, which is what our goal for the last year and moving into this year is, is really working with our special populations and being able to help, help teachers scaffold certain lessons to be able to meet the needs of our English language population, our special education, all of those special populations that we've been focusing on. So it's a huge time saver for a lot of our teachers who have been utilizing it for the past year. And what we're also finding is that there's pieces of it that are helping us to come up with intervention plans for kids. So you input some data about, you know, how a student is performing. It helps us with the student study team information. It helps us create kind of an intervention plan and creates, it's just a huge time saver for our teachers. It's been absolutely loved by the staff or the 40 teachers that have done it over the course of the last year.
Okay, and then I have a question for Mrs. Lash. The Funding Source, ESS, does this affect, like, we've, we've, we always talk about where the, where the money's coming from. So from a budget perspective, what's your opinion?
This is unrestricted general fund dollars.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Could I ask, Kimberly, Dr. Velez, sorry, is this multi-grade from first grade up through high school, or is it limited to a middle school or elementary school or subject areas? Or is it just general for any teacher who needs the information?
So it's a K-12 contract, so it's for any teacher in the district.
Great, thank you.
And, Dr. Velez, your explanation was fantastic, but I would like to hear from our new Director of Instructional Technology on this contract.
Well, Jimmy, you haven't even started, and it's not even July 1st yet. Welcome to the club.
One thing I wanted to add was that a big piece, we've been talking about academic scores across the board, and one of the things that AI can do is really bring that rigor in terms of the level. So if you are looking for whatever topic it might be, and you want to increase the depth of, depth of knowledge, the type of question, you want to increase the rigor in what's being taught, Magic School AI and those other components can really enrich that and make it really higher level thinking. Oftentimes, you go into a classroom and you're thinking, well, that's kind of a baseline level type question or baseline level learning. AI can not only build upon that, it's built across all grade levels. And the other thing I really like to hit on is that it's about efficiency. We have lots of teachers that do a lot of work, and what this can do is really streamline their process and allow them to be much more efficient in their time and effective in teaching. Because now you have the ability to gain lesson plans, to build, just like Dr. Velez was saying, and do all of those things with significantly less time put in and to develop into more, you know, quality instruction in our classrooms.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I've been dabbling with free programs. Obviously, this is created by teachers for teachers. I don't know if, Dr. Komraski, you had a comment. I know as a professor, you've talked about AI, but there are a lot of free applications. So what do you see the main difference being here with the search engines and the way all of this is put together?
The biggest component with Magic School is, number one, it has a DPA. So with those privacy agreements, we have to keep all of our information that we're putting in there safe. And so, number one, for security reasons, Magic School is a tool that we can utilize. Think of it as a filter that funnels from the large model of like OpenAI, Gemini, all of those ones. So it allows a protection for our staff when using it. So that's a big component. The other things is that it identifies categories of what they can utilize it for, whether it's lesson planning and things like that, that allows them to be efficient in their role while keeping them, like, our data privacy in place.
All right, I pulled this item too, so I have a question. Are students using AI in the school district? This is the broad question. With this magic AI, students will not be using this, correct?
Well, once again, I can't speak for the entire district, but I can speak with my, you know, one hour or one day role of what's going on, is that with, with Magic School, this is actually developed for teachers, for them to utilize from an instructional standpoint, not for student-driven, although we will have opportunities in the future to talk about how it's utilized as for our students in the district. But right now, we're really focusing on the 40 teachers that piloted and using it from the teacher perspective, because there also is, there's also age limits in terms of what you like. For an example, OpenAI has a 13-year-old age limit. So we're going to have to do that as we develop guidelines in AI, and when we allow, you know, students to use it, or if we decide to allow them to use it, it's going to be on that point. But this is specifically for the teachers and how we can maximize instruction in the classroom from the teacher perspective.
If we vote this in, it's an open door in the future for the possibility of students using it, correct?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, that would be something where this is specifically for what we piloted, and the pilot was with just our teachers. So I don't know.
Correct. It's just for teachers. And I think it's really important to understand that any application that is AI that this district would adopt, there would be actual board policy, there would be guidelines, there would be training. So we have not purchased something that we just have let loose for students in any way. This actually is really for an educational, educational instructional practices purposes. That's really where it is.
And if you dive in, Dr. Komraski, we also want to show you the little tools that are within, embedded. So you'll see Lesson Planner, they'll go through, you'll have texts that are there, and, oh, okay. If you have, like, if you want to feed in like text or you have the ability, it's all generated from the teacher focus. And so all of those tools that are run through are all for teachers on that side.
Is this all embedded into Canvas platform, or is it outside of it?
No, this will be outside.
Okay, and I have no further questions for you, but I have a comment for the board.
Can we have a?
Something?
Yeah.
So there is a student component. That's a separate product, and it's, the focus of the student component is mostly to teach students the responsible way of using AI for learning. And like Jimmy said also, the fact that this is probably the only product that's willing to sign a student data privacy agreement, kind of limits us. Anything that might be free, they don't, because they make their money with, with our information and learn from our students.
I appreciate that.
Dr. Komraski, you had another comment?
Yeah, do you have a comment? So as a professor, I think AI, from the student perspective, I have an ethics concern, because I think it can dampen their critical thinking potential. From a professor/teacher perspective, I think it's, I think it's insane, yeah, using it for IEPs or lesson planning, and it really is good. My ethics concern is, is that if a student has access to this, I will not vote it in until the community gets surveyed, all 29 school sites, parents, community members, guardians, no, parents in the district and guardians, because I want the community, this is a pivotal shift with AI going into the future, and once you open the door with students, it's just open. Before that gets open, I want a robust survey going out to the parents.
And, Dr. Komraski, I appreciate that. I think that there's no intention to do anything in AI that is directly student-related, without committees, without conversation, without guidelines that come to the board. So that is definitely something that we would, that we would do.
Got it. So when Jose said that it could be used by students, that's not to say that if this gets voted in, it will be used by students at TVUSD?
So it's my understanding, and Jose, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that that component can be turned off to students. We're not, we're not doing it openly to all students and all staff. This purchase of this is intended for staff.
So if we vote this in, that will be turned off? I have to have an absolute guarantee or I won't vote it in?
Let me ask Jose, just because of the technical component?
Yeah. Let me add one more piece to that, just because I wanted to tell you, Dr. Komraski, that I'm a part of the RCOE AI Task Force, and so these are all things that are being developed right now through the county, that we're developing not only our guidance and policies, but at what age appropriate it's going to be. So we'll have all of that. It's all to come. Just wanted to assure you that.
How crucial is this for this meeting versus waiting two weeks or July? I mean, obviously, we have a school year now in a couple months. If we wanted to see the data of people who utilized it and ask some of these questions and look at things?
Well, because I'm jumping in new, I'll pass that question off. I know that right now, like, in terms of being a part of the pilot and seeing what was being done at the, at the level, it's really exciting, but I don't know in terms of the timeframe if that is crucial. I'll leave that to maybe Dr. Velez.
And let me, if we want to, and I think that, getting your point, Dr. Komraski, if we want to delay it and we want to extend this and move it to the next meeting, I'm perfectly okay with that. I understand the concerns about AI. I would rather address those concerns between now and the next meeting and bring it back with, with answers, those types of things. I would feel more comfortable with that, knowing that you all have the right answers.
Then I'm going to motion for that.
So let me get, I'm going to just go with a ask before we make, so, right now, who opposes moving forward with this? Dr. Komraski, right now, you're saying you oppose moving forward with the contract?
Well, I made a motion.
Okay, so.
Which I would second, to waiting to get a little bit more information.
So we have a motion in a second. I think we need to move on because we've got a lot going on.
We can do, we can do post-motion discussion.
So what data are we looking for if we wait? Specifically, what data are we waiting for?
Teacher feedback. And then for me, like I said, most certainly, I will not vote this in. If a student has access to it right now, I will not do that.
Okay.
So let me.
That has to be a dead sure answer for me.
So, Dr. Komraski, let me clarify. We've already had 40 teachers pilot this. So it's already been piloted. We already have that piece vetted. Those are highly qualified teachers that we've already vetted it with. So I think what my intention and my explanation about kicking it down the road about two weeks is to be able to answer the questions that you have, or provide the data that was shared by the 40 teachers. What does that data look like? What did they like about it? What did they not like about it? I'm perfectly fine sharing that information.
That's what I was going to suggest under an information reports, because I think this, it's too fast on consent. It needs to be slow roll just a little bit. I would like a report out of the data.
Okay, we're going to go with a motion in a second to.
Put it in information reports next meeting?
Put it in information and reports. I say no, but, okay. Lenny, call her.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komraski?
Yes.
Sorry. Barham? Anderson?
Okay, yes.
It's fine. It's fine.
So the motion to postpone approval of the contract, tell me if this sounds like a good motion, Joseph. The motion, it was to postpone it till the next meeting in information and reports.
Correct.
Okay. And that passed unanimously. The next one is number 41. Who requested?
Forty.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses down on my face. Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, this is a contract that's something like 40 pages long, and I was just kind of looking through it, and something struck me. I'll just take one thing for example, because I am going to vote no on this. Regardless, I just want to point one thing out. On page four, it says complaints. It says if there's a complaint, it shall be forwarded to the district within five days. I've been on this board for five years. I can't believe there's never been one complaint from this particular school, and I've never heard a complaint. I can't believe a school with that many students has never had a complaint in five years. I cannot vote for a 40-page contract without having it looked through. And all the things that are in there, it's just, just beyond my understanding. I have to go through it with somebody who really knows what they're talking about.
Mr. Schwartz, would you make a motion to have this contract reviewed by legal before approving?
Dr. Anderson, just to clarify, this has already been vetted by legal. We work with, we work with our legal on this particular contract, always with our facilities.
I'm wondering, would Lisa Brown, I know she's worked quite a bit with our charter schools, perhaps she would be somebody that could answer a question or two?
No, there's, there's too much in there. It's 40 pages. I'm sorry. I started reading through it and just something struck me as, I can't vote for this without more information. And I know that legal has vetted it, and I have visited the school, and I've heard from people whose kids go there, how great it is. I have friends whose kids go there. That's not the issue. I cannot vote for a 40-page contract without sitting down with somebody and going through it and making sure that everything in there protects us and protects our district and the kids who go there.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz, would you motion postponing this for two weeks to review it?
Okay.
All right.
Then I move, oh, go ahead, sorry. Mr. Barham?
Mrs. Weirzma, do you have anything you want to say on this one?
I would love an AI brief summary by Lisa Brown. I know that you have worked.
Wait, is this about the AI that we already approved?
No, it's about the charter school. Temecula Preparatory is amazing. I appreciate Mr. Schwartz recognizing that. My kids attended for four years. But I would love to hear just a very brief synopsis, because I know you have the expertise and knowledge. So if that helps, Mr. Schwartz, that might be a great thing.
Could you bring the contract up, please, Lenny?
So, a few weeks ago, months ago, you guys approved the renewal of the charter for a five-year term. So this MOU and the facilities use agreement really goes into extending their agreement for facility space and our understanding of what services we will provide as a district to the charter. So the charter themselves are like their own LEA. They're their own district, in a sense. So not only are they a school in amongst themselves, but they operate as a district. So when we receive a complaint about the charter school, there is very limited action that we can take as a district. There are a few areas where a parent at the charter school can file a formal complaint with the state, and it really relates to two things that I am aware of. The first one being enrollment procedures and how they do their lottery system, and the second thing relates to special education services. And those formal complaints are handled at the state. When I receive a formal complaint in regards to a charter school issue, whether it's this charter school or another charter school, Mr. Marble and myself, we, one of us will contact the parents, and we will guide them through the proper channels of the formal complaint procedures and the uniform complaint procedures at the charter school, as well as their options with the state. And that's where our role stops.
Okay. So I have a question. So, within the last, within this year, have you received complaints regarding this? I mean, complaints that you're aware of?
I maybe receive one a year, maybe.
And the nature of that complaint would be with regard to the lottery and/or, or special education?
Not typically.
Not typically?
Typically, they're related to, it could be a behavior incident, it could be how a parent perceived something was handled at the school. a parent perceived something was handled at the school, and those are typically handled within-house.
Okay.
So I have a question, and this goes to when you talk about being efficient. Mr. Schwartz is opposed to this. Is anyone else opposed to this? Okay, then I'm going to call the question. I motioned to approve the contract, the Facilities Use Agreement Amendment and Memorandum of Understanding to Temecula Preparatory School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linay, please call roll.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, the motion passes four to one. Next is Legal Service Agreement Advocates for Faith and Freedom. Who pulled this one? Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
I'm okay with the settlement. I just want to make it understood and clear that we are not going forward with the lawsuit, that we decided not to appeal the decision. I think there was some confusion in the community about that. I just want to make sure that everyone understands what we did.
Okay, and I need to make a motion with that, because there was some confusion and intransparency, I guess this is a good time to talk about it. There was some confusion with the point of contact and Ms. Fleischer. She set a court date. I think the request from the plaintiff's counsel, Mr. Rosenbaum, was to extend, ask for a 30-day extension. But instead, there was a court date set, and then I had a phone call, just so that everyone knows, I had a phone call between David Huff, myself, it was on a Friday night, late at night, and everyone knows how I feel about late-night phone calls, but it was actually Mr. Huff that was, texted me, like, I need to talk to you, because Rosenbaum had talked to him, and there was some confusion about whether the court date should have been set. And advocates in faith and freedom seem to believe that they were not given the correct information about moving forward, and so I'm going to motion that we appoint Mr. Barham the point of contact with Advocates of Faith and Freedom regarding legal issues moving forward. Do I have a second? Or do I have, okay, so you have a second, and then it's open for discussion.
So I was originally the point of contact. Why are you suggesting a new one?
Because they, what I just said, they scheduled a court date, and after a few hours on the phone, it was stated to me that they were not giving, given the information from the point of contact that they needed. I believe, in closed session, they, it's my personal opinion that they did have that information, but they stated that the point of contact didn't give them the information about not moving forward and the consensus that Mr. Huff was going to settle the matter with Mr. Rosenbaum. And so there's been another point of confusion, and we discussed it, and I'm going to have, I, I think that Mr. Barham should be the point of contact with them moving forward, just to eliminate confusion.
And just a point of clarity, that would have been board direction given in closed session, not by me. As a point of contact, I don't...
No, no, I, I asked you to be the point of contact, and then after that phone call, we thought that maybe Mr. Barham should be the point of contact.
Right, but my point of clarity is that I don't tell Advocates for Faith and Freedom what to do with the court date. That's given, that's instruction in closed session. I just report back what advocates telling me to tell the board.
They felt that the information that they needed regarding the court date wasn't relayed to them, and that's why they set the court date, if they would have been given information that the case wasn't moving forward. So like I said, in my opinion, I felt like it was pretty clear, but they felt like it wasn't made clear to them during the phone call. So I...
Yeah, that would have been given by board direction, but yeah, go ahead. Jen, Mrs. Weirzma has a question.
So I'd like to make a suggestion with this. I very much object based on what was shared in closed session, with Mr. Barham being the contact. We obviously can't reveal what was said in closed, but I do believe there should be somebody from the old guard and the new guard, as discussed, because there was not full faith in the comments and the debate that went on. I absolutely have no faith and trust for you to put him in charge of this discussion. And in the very least, I think that Dr. Komroski needs to be paired, if he's so willing, just as we talked about, for the committee. There needs to be dual collaboration. I, I absolutely am opposed to that as a suggestion for many, many reasons.
Okay, thank you for your opinion, Dr. Komroski.
Okay, so this is a good timing. Thanks, Mrs. Weirzma. Yeah, going back to Mr. Schwartz's comment, and he's been, he's been honest the whole time, so I have nothing against his position, but I don't have full faith and confidence. I'm very disappointed at the second decision to stop Advocates for Faith and Freedom potentially advancing the lawsuit, especially the Supreme Court. Everybody knows, like, I am, I am very disappointed in that. And so after the last meeting, events have transpired to where I don't even want to be a part of the subcommittee, and it's right here that I will remove myself. And even after, especially what you just said about point of contact, that doesn't even matter to me. But it's, it's the misinformation that you're spreading. I don't have full faith and confidence that you and Emil will do anything to advance what me, Danny, and Jen have already done. In fact, your comments in the LA Times are shameful. I hereby officially remove myself from the subcommittee, and I wipe my hands clean. You even opened the door to working with the union? Good luck. Because honestly, had you told people you were running like that, you would have never got elected as a conservative.
No, it's okay, because, so, Linay, will you make a note that Dr. Komroski is no longer going to be on the CRT committee, so that we'll just, Mr. Barham, you're the only one right now on the, do you want to work with Mr. Barham on the CRT committee?
No.
No.
So, so you are deciding it's a no, Mr. Barham?
I don't want to work with you, Mrs. Weirzma, after what you just said, so no thanks.
You were the one who commented that the workshop was a total travesty and a disaster for you, and nothing but negative. You are not the one to be in charge of this.
Point of order, point of order.
No, thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, we're good.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. So we have Mr. Barham on the committee. I can remove that motion, because it was kind of already decided that I would be a backup point of contact to make sure the information that was being shared to Advocates in faith and freedom was clear. So I just let them know that going forward, no matter who the point of contact is, I'll be sure that they have a second point of contact to just make sure that there's clarification. And that came up on several occasions, and, and one was, I did email Ms. Fleischer several times, expressing that she might want to talk to other board members or the point of contact that we set up, per their request, when we set up the committee. And I think, and it has, the conversation was several hours, and it was a lot of talking about the confusion that we've had over the past year. So, Mr. Barham, you'll be on the CRT committee. And then, what was that?
I'll be a committee of one.
Do you want to be a committee of one?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to have, I think you already have some ideas, anyway.
I do.
And then you'll be the point of contact, so I motion that, do I, do we have consensus that Mr. Barham will be the committee and the point of contact?
Yes.
Can we take a vote?
Yeah, let's take a vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I'm, I motion that Mr. Barham be the point of contact and the committee member for rewriting the CRT policy, and...
Either, either rewriting or giving the superintendent some direction with that regard?
Or, yeah, we'll just call it a CRT committee.
Yeah, second.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, I have a second. Linay, please call roll.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Absolutely not.
Komroski?
For clarity, no, because I think Mrs. Weirzma should be on the subcommittee with Mr. Barham if she wants to, but my answer is no.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. So the motion passes three to two, and I think we can give it a little bit of time and see if we can add another board member to that committee. The next item, Citizens Oversight Committee Member Appointee. Now, this Citizens Oversight Committee, is this with Measure Y, the bond?
Correct. It's from the 2012 Measure Y.
It's the 2012 Citizens Oversight Committee. Who pulled this item?
Dr. Komroski? Yes, I pulled it because Janet Dixon was a former employee of TVUSD as the facilities director, and even though it might not be viewed as, as a conflict of interest, because she's no longer an employee, the sense of impartiality can be there, because it's directly going to impact facilities which she worked as a director for. So my thought is to possibly have her removed as a member, or somebody maybe can speak to me, Dr. Woods, and I'll ask you, if you can speak to me on this, or some other member of the cabinet, why Janet Dixon is being recommended for this position, how that would avoid the optics of impartiality.
Ms. Lash, do you have more information than I do?
So we usually have to recruit for these Citizen Oversight Committee members. We posted this on our website, we sent out flyers, and Mrs. Dixon was the only applicant to sit for the position, so if we don't give it to her, we won't comply with the requirements of the Citizens Oversight Committee and the makeup of that committee. We are actually, excuse me, hopeful that, given her background, she'll actually probably scrutinize the funding, spending down. She's very knowledgeable, and the Oversight Committee is to make sure that we're following the ballot language and to be the community liaison, making sure that those bond funds are spent down properly. And she was here in 2012 when that was passed, and so she's very familiar with the language. So I think it will actually make her senses heightened and make her a very good committee member because of her background and knowledge on the content. And again, she's only one of seven members of the committee. They have no actual acting authority. That remains here with the Board of Education.
I appreciate your response.
Point of order. I, I think we had a motion and a second on AFF, but we didn't vote, Dr. Anderson, on, on not...
On the whole agreements.
On, on not going forward.
Oh.
We wanted to clarify that. You had a motion and a second.
I had a motion and a second.
But we didn't vote on it.
Yeah, let's finish this one.
Let's finish this one and go back to that. Thank you, that's, I'm always looking for help with those.
I appreciate the format, because it's totally necessary. When did she leave as an employee? What year, last year? Janet Dixon, or two years ago?
She left two years ago, actually.
I only know the name, because it related to the Five G Tower. That's the only, I was like, oh, and I had to look it up. So I didn't know if it was the same Janet Dixon. Okay, so two years ago. In your opinion, do you think that it's a conflict of interest?
I do not.
You think the opposite, that she'd be good for the committee because of her past experience with Measure Y? Is that what it was?
Exactly. Her knowledge would actually make her, I would say, close to an expert in what those funds should be spent on and making sure that it matches the ballot language and those expenditures.
Do you have a motion, Dr. Komroski?
Could I ask one more question? This is specifically with Y and not any other measure, correct? So it's just a continuation?
Exactly. And I think I mentioned that Measure Y will be spent down this fiscal year, and then the audit for this fiscal year will happen next year. And so after the funds are all spent, the audit's all done, then we will no longer see, need this COC committee. But until that happens, we'll probably need them for about another year and a half, until all of those boxes are checked. And you're absolutely correct. This is just in relation to Measure Y and the spending down of those final dollars.
And every individual on this list agreed to be a part, moving forward? Right, confirmation?
Yeah, you have to apply. Rarely, but it's happened where multiple people will apply for a position, and then they get interviewed. In this case, she was the only applicant.
Thank you.
Do you have a, what are you thinking, Dr. Komroski? Do you have a motion? Okay, then I am, I motioned to approve the Citizens Oversight Committee Member Appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linay?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. All right. Next is Information and...
We have to vote on that.
Oh, Mr. Schwartz, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So we need to amend that agreement, then?
What is the, what does it say in the agreement?
No, no, we don't.
We don't need to amend the agreement?
Because it doesn't have any names.
It wasn't specific.
Yeah, you're right.
So I appro, I, I motion to approve, what number was that?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. To approve the Legal Service Agreement Advocates for Faith and Freedom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did we give that?
No, that's not the one. We're talking about not moving forward. I think that was the one.
No, we already approved not to move forward.
We did that? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So I, I approve to approve the Legal Service Agreement Advocates of Faith and Freedom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linay?
Do we, do we discuss this one? We did, did we? Okay.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, the motion passes four to one. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I didn't want to skip that. We are now moving on to Information and Reports. Do we have any public comments?
Any LCAP? No? None? Okay, Liz?
Okay. We're going to start with the LCAP presentation. We're going to do three minutes. This was in the Friday update in detail, and it's similar to the one that was presented earlier this year, so, and then we'll save time for questions.
Sure. So tonight, we're going to take a look at two things. We're going to take a look at a brief summary of the LCAP for '25, '26. And then we're also going to take a look at our local indicators. So the LCAP and the local indicators must be approved simultaneously by the board, which hopefully will happen at the next meeting. So you can view the entire LCAP document on our website, all 140 pages of it. It'll be a nice read for you, but...
Real quick, can I ask you, pause time, was that in the Friday update, the hundred and...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's the one that was, that's the same one?
Yep.
Okay, so it's in...
I'm up to 33.
You're up to page 33?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to take me a while.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody knows where it's from. So remember that our LCAP money is principally directed to our socioeconomic disadvantaged students, our EL, which includes our ELTEL, our Long-Term English Language Learners, and our foster youth. So this year's LCAP's total planned expenditures is just over $26 million. There is a little bit of a caveat this year. Typically, this is just LCFF fundings, which came in at $21.8 million. But one of the nuances of LCAP this year was that districts were required to report their learning recovery emergency block grant within the LCAP this year. This was a state-mandated requirement that came out of legal action by, by the state. Some of the expenditures also include A through G money, as well as two general-funded actions that were in LCAP prior. So we did give the community opportunity for feedback on the LCAP. You can see there that the top-rated actions with across kindergarten through 12th grade, where literacy specialists, our ELA math specialists, our SAF social workers and behavior assistants, our counselors, the site allocations that we give the sites to address their underperforming student groups, as well as the intervention specialist at the high school level. The six goals remain the same, so focused on ELA and ELD, math and science, grad rate and college and career indicator, decreasing our RED indicators across all of the dashboard indicators, as well as decreasing chronic absenteeism and engaging with educational partners. The new actions that are in LCAP, and remember that these are the learning recovery block grant funded, is that we have math co-teaching, our UC scout program, high school counselors to decrease caseloads, as well as ExactPath and intervention administrators at the middle school level, as well as five-star. So the plan itself remains fairly the same with those added actions. The dashboard local indicators, this is a reflective rubric that we complete as a district. We do submit these, they are reported to the dashboard. We have until August 1st to submit them. So when it comes to basics, teaching materials, facilities, we, all of our teachers are appropriately credentialed to teach EL students. All of our students have access to their instructional materials, and all of our facilities are in good repair. When we look at the rubric as far as implementation and sustainability of all the content areas listed there, we have either met full implementation and sustainability or full implementation in all of those areas. And then when we scroll further down the page, we also have to report how we are doing with parent and family engagement. So this year, this is how our parents rated through the Panorama platform surveys that we sent out in the fall, creating helpful environments for students that are learning. And you can see there, I'm not gonna read them all for sake of time, that a lot of our data maintained. We have a lot of really great indicators, parents' ability to support learning in the home at 90%. And then when we look at broad course of study and access to broad course of study, every single one of our metrics increased last year, which is great. High school graduation rate, A through G completion rate, AVID, CTE completers and enrollment and AP courses all went up, which is a huge bonus for our school. That also helps with our CCI indicator. And then we are mandated by law to complete a local climate survey, and so you can see the numbers there. Some of the growth that we had at the middle school level in particular, when it comes to school climate and safety, as well as supported relationships, was great. We maintained in a lot of areas, and we have some really high marks. So all of this is taken into consideration when we present our local, when we present our local indicators and adopt those for the '25 dashboard, which will come out in November. And with that, really quick overview. Sorry, went over my three minutes.
So it is quite obvious that TVUSD is moving in the right direction, and I just want to commend our staff, our teachers, all of our employees, because it takes all of us to accomplish what we're accomplishing. And I'm gonna also speak to our student achievement data with, in my closing comments, but all of the indicators point that TVUSD, in the words of our superintendent, "We are winning." So I am very happy about that, but I have some questions for you.
Sure.
Okay, so I have no idea what ExactPath is, nine through 12.
So we're gonna start with questions. Do you guys want to use the same model where we take turns?
Yeah, let's use the same model.
Okay, take turns.
I have no idea what that is.
Sure. So ExactPath, think of, it's an iReady equivalent for the high schools. So one of the things that the high schools are struggling with at the moment is data on a regular basis that shows where our students are. And so ExactPath allows for a diagnostic to happen several times throughout the year so that teachers and administrators can progress monitor, because at the high school level, CASP only happens once. It's only captured in the 11th grade, and so we have a big data lag time between eighth graders taking CASP and 11th graders taking CASP. And then every single year in high school, you're testing a different group of students, so you have no comparison data. So we're hoping that by implementing ExactPath at the high school level, that we will have data where we can run continuous cycles of improvement, really provide strategic interventions, and catch kids early who are underperforming.
Mr. Schwartz, you have a question?
No, just a comment. Thank you, Lisa. I visited Red Hawk, I was there for the graduation, and two of the math teachers grabbed hold of me, who were co-teachers, and were talking about how exciting it was doing that, and they were actually gonna be doing a presentation. They said in November at some kind of a conference, some of our teachers are gonna be presenting at a conference, and so apparently, not only are we moving ahead with kids, but we have teachers who are excited about it, and when teachers are excited, learning goes up. And so kudos to you and everybody who's involved in making sure this moves on. Thank you.
Was there another question?
Yeah. Do you want to go first?
Dr. Komroski? No, I don't have a question.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Since our goal's in accountability, one of the things we talk about is safety with me and Mr. Barham, but on school safety, I see there's a negative two for students three through five, and then a school climate, that's another one, the climate, the belonging, like the atmosphere, which tends to indirectly relate to safety. I see the parents went down 1%, and then the staff, point or negative two. Can you speak to any of that briefly, if it's possible?
Yeah, I mean, there's fluctuation, right? There's fluctuation in the number of parents that complete the survey every single year. Holding within one to two percentage points is what the state would call maintaining. Do we always want to exceed the expectations of parents and staff? Absolutely. I think it depends on what's happening on your campus at the time of the survey. There's lots of different factors that play into that. Third grade as a whole saw a little bit of a dip this year, as reported in safety. It was super interesting to me, having spent my entire career at the elementary school level, to see that third, like the dip for elementary school was really, really based on our third grade students, so that I found really interesting to me, but it's also the very first time they take the survey. So could it have been like an anomaly with just them participating in the survey for the first time? I don't know. But the great thing about this data is not only do we get to compile it by grade level, by school site, by student group, we also get to see how the individual student responded. And I'm gonna give you an example. My own student takes this test, or this test, this survey, and one of the things that he reported on this survey was that he didn't feel connected to school. Like, he didn't feel like he had an adult at school that he could go to anywhere, anytime. One of the things that his school did was they brought him in to, like, the morning announcements club, where he got to participate in making the videos for the morning announcements. And the next time he took the survey in the spring, he said, "Yes, I do feel connected, and I do feel like I have an adult on campus." So not only is it being looked at by, like, the student level, it's also being looked at by the group level, too. So that individual student that's saying, "No, I don't feel connected," or "No, I don't feel safe," is getting an adult interaction based on that response.
Thanks for sharing that and your story about your son. Yeah, that's, that's great to hear.
Okay. Mrs. Weirzma, did you have any questions?
Mr. Barham, you have an additional question?
I do, I have a couple, actually. So with ExactPath, what subject areas will they, will these high school students be diagnosed in?
I believe we're looking at math specifically, but this is also a high school, it's just math, right? Okay, just math this year.
So, so how does that relate to the contract that we spoke about? I mean, because they're two different, I mean, does that contract that we spoke about in my questions that I didn't bring up relate to ExactPath?
Correct, yes, it's the exact same thing.
It's the same thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're just piloting it with math this year to see how we can, what we can learn from it this year.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Okay, so...
We need more consensus to keep asking questions.
I just have two more.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Everyone okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Lisa, I, I know I asked somebody when we did the LCAP budget meeting with Mrs. Lash in the conference room about a month ago, because we're in year, we're gonna be going into year two, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can we change the plan if we wanted, if we wanted to change the plan, if we found that things maybe weren't working the way that we wanted them to work? I asked this question, right, in that meeting? Can we change the plan?
So you can, you can change the plan.
Not that I would, I just want to know.
Yeah, there, you can always bring the plan back. It would always need board approval if it was changed. We would need to resubmit it to our COE and have it reapproved, but it's a living, breathing document, so it can be changed.
It can be changed, okay.
So I think, Mr. Barham, one of the things that we look at throughout the course of the year after the board approves the LCAP is we, as an ed services team, are always looking at it to see if we do need to adjust and if our allocations are in the right place, and if they're having a positive impact.
Okay. So whatever we're going to face, because Mrs. Lash is gonna present something on the budget, what she presents isn't really gonna impact the positions within the realm of LCAP. We wouldn't make any changes in positions because we've kind of already set that. Am I right?
So LCAP is based on the LCFF calculator. It is a portion of the LCFF dollars. It's the concentration grant that we get for these particular students. So the number does fluctuate occasionally. We have to stay within that budgeted number, right?
Yeah.
So...
So those positions are set. What we budgeted for with our LCAP dollars were, were, were set.
It's no more set than the budget itself, so you could update it every budget period if you wanted to. So we have in the past, when things got really bad financially, made cuts to the LCAP to then make room for other things, because again, you're just trying to maximize all of your dollars. So there are things outside of LCAP that meet the criteria for LCAP that we could reduce in LCAP to make room for. So just because you approve it tonight, now, I don't recommend doing that because how do we see what's effective until we give it time?
Right.
And so for now, this is the plan that we're asking to be approved, but if our financial position changes, which is what I think Mrs. Brown was alluding to, if our financial projections change...
And that's what I'm asking about.
...change, we will have to pivot.
Okay.
We will have to make adjustments. This is not set in stone.
So there's, so there's, and not that I'm advocating for it, because I'm not.
Right.
Because we're making progress with our special populations. But I, I just want to make sure that if, that there's flexibility there if we, if we need to have it.
There's definitely flexibility.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Do we have someone here to present black mats on the West Side chain link fence? All right, then we will move on to item number three. I want to discuss amending the board policy regarding student board members. I think people are still getting used to, I will make suggestions, but I'm always open to amendments, because some of the public has had concerns about the student board members, but I am open to any suggestions. So can you pull that up real quick? I wanted to initially limit the student board member participation for the first few months so that they can be on the board, have a feel for the flow of things. I think this would be a good opportunity if they want to engage more as a board member. One of us could sit down with them, teach them how to amend this policy themselves once they've been on the board for a few months, and they realize, okay, I want, I want to have more of a role in this, or I don't want to do the Pledge of Allegiance or so. I, I just would like for them to be on the board as, as a, not as participating until they get a feel for our board. And I also think our board needs to be accustomed to having a student and a minor on, because I think we need to be more cautious when we have a student board member. I know, Mrs. Weirzma, you had a question about this.
So I've read different emails and questions people have had about this particular policy. Was this vetted, what we have now, through legal? I know CSBA has a policy, so I don't know if you pulled from there. I think one thing that would have been good is I know Steve and I had worked together on this and had some conversations about it. I would have appreciated being pulled in to this, because we were designated as a subcommittee, because I think we had both read quite a bit while working on it, and I think in the future, that would be helpful to avoid miscommunication, and then it should be agendized as such, right, with somebody who's had a stake in it, to be able to speak into it.
My practice is to not have legal look at anything until we've discussed it as a board, amended it as a board. I believe it's a waste of time for me to say, like, hey, this is my idea, so unless a committee, like I know with the Parental Rights Notification Committee, we had legal vet the accommodation that, that we presented, but usually, I will not have legal vet it until after we've kind of discussed it as a board. I think we need board direction. You guys might not even want to move forward with these amendments, so I don't want to waste the time on legal yet. So no, legal hasn't vetted it, because I'm looking for, one, board direction, so it's just in information reports. And the second thing is, because there was a committee of two, I felt like it might be a Brown Act violation if I talked to one of the two that were already on. So that's why I didn't discuss this with you or Mr. Schwartz in detail, because I, I wasn't sure if that would be three people discussing the student board member. I thought the best way would be to put it on and then start the conversation now, and I'm open to discussion and amendments and suggestions from the entire board at this time, even, I need board consensus, whether or not you guys even like these ideas.
I just made a few notes. This is uncharted territory for us. I would like to talk to some other districts, and I will do it informally. I can call people in Murrieta who I know and ask them they've had a student board member. I know there are ed codes about student board members and what their rights and responsibilities are. It would be my suggestion that for maybe the first two meetings, we just have our student board member observe what goes on before they actually participate in the, in the deliberations and discussion, just so they get a feel of how it works. And then I think we should include the things that are in ed code for them, in terms of having voting rights, being seated with other members, being recognized as full board members, and the things that they're not allowed to sit in on, like negotiations, discipline, and personnel matters. But I think maybe one or two meetings of just sitting with us and observing might be good for the new board member to kind of get a feel of how things go before we initiate their term.
Can I refer this back to the committee?
Absolutely.
With the information I put on?
Sure.
And then the understanding that I would like to see them in an observational role initially. What are your thoughts on that?
So I do like that, and I think, again, I'm gonna circle back to, the only reason I brought up legal is I called CSBA today, because they've got a policy, and they said, you know, you do want to be sure, as Uptnate had written a letter, that things are done legally, which is why I would have asked that five-minute question. It's fine, I like the idea of starting out this way. I think in the future, maybe Dr. Woods or Linny could have come back to the committee and said, if we're gonna agendize something, here's the thoughts or discussion points. That way, we do avoid a Brown Act issue, and subcommittee people are able to keep continuity with the discussion and make sure everything's covered. So I do like what you mentioned about bringing the student board member on, letting them acclimate, and then speaking to some of the things that they might like to see. The community needs to know in a preferential vote, there, it, it doesn't count towards an actual decision, but a student does have that option to cast it. I think it's wise not to get into a back and forth and a debate, but if there's a window where they feel comfortable to give a two-minute presentation of information, I think that can be acceptable. So I look forward to developing that with the board. I, I think it can be a good thing, and we'll just move forward from there.
Okay, Dr. Komroski?
Thank you. About for the first time, a board member comes up on the board, maybe before the meeting, each board member spends five minutes with that student alone. Hey, the, you know, a personal conversation outside of the, the, the normal bureaucratic business we conduct up here, and sometimes the polarized political, social issues. I think it would be good for the student to actually get to know a board member when, before they sit up here. It'd be really good. Were members of the community...
I don't, I don't think the female should spend time alone with you, Doc, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Barham.
We could, we could do it here in public, is what I'm getting at, before a meeting. Yeah, right here, you know? So yeah, okay, so that, I don't think a student board member should morally deliberate on the dais with the, with the other board members on any item. I think they should be allowed, though, at the end of the board comments to talk. I will say, though, that when I went to the CSBA conference last year at Sacramento, I saw many sharp students that were student board members, and they have wonderful ideas, and they're highly organized with resources. So I'm open to see what CSBA, like Mrs. Weirzma, can bring as well, but I do think it's important for a board member to sit down with us, to get to know us one-on-one, five minutes here in public, everybody can see it, and then no moral deliberation. That's left up to the elected officials, in my opinion. And then... And then at the end of the meeting, yeah, they can speak.
Mr. Schwartz, did you have another comment?
When we visited Chapparallin, we told Melissa she was elected. I did speak with her for about two minutes, but that really wasn't enough. And I think Joe's idea is a good idea where we can each spend five or so minutes just telling her who we are, just so she knows. Yeah, I was a teacher. Yes, I, I, this is my background. You know, I think, I think it's important that she know who we are so she can kind of relate to us on different ideas. So, I think, I like that.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Barham?
This is a tough one because I, our students are so smart and articulate so very well. But I think that on certain items, I think it will be difficult for a student board member to deliberate. We have to understand that when we're finished deliberating and we're finished with a board meeting, we get to go home and we can shut the curtains if we want to. That student has to go to school the next day. And depending on that item, you know, this, this student is still a minor. I mean, we don't know what kind of backlash there could be from her deliberations. So, I think we have to be careful in how we proceed with that. I think that her parents should have some input into that as well because she's a minor. I mean, just two months ago or three months ago, security was asking me at the end of the meeting, do you want to be escorted to your car? I mean, and, you know, so we need to be careful as to what, what we're going to ask of this student board member because she is a minor. In Murrieta, the student board member has a preferential vote on some items, not everything. And in addition to that, we are all privy between board meetings as things come up on the agenda that...
To do the research.
Yeah, to do the research, that she is not going to be privy to. And it's going to, uh, it's, I think it will cause the meetings to go longer. I mean, because we have to consider her. I mean, and if that's the way we want to go, that's fine. But I think it's the safety and the backlash that she might face if she is deliberating on certain items that we need to be concerned with.
Okay. So, we, we've all agreed in the essence of time, there's no action going to be taken. We've all agreed to push this back to committee. And I think they all understand where we want to go with it. So, the next thing, why don't we have the committee present something for us? And then we'll continue the conversation then. Dr. Kamroski, I have you marked down as commenting twice on this. Did I mark it incorrectly? Did you comment once or twice on this?
I think it was once. I'd like to make a quick comment. Yeah, I'd be fine with meeting, you know, cause of course, the parents are going to be here the first meeting to congratulate her daughter. Sit down with the parents. Awesome.
Okay, then, um, so we know where this is headed. I want to make a motion to pull item four off the agenda and add it to next, um, meeting because we have too many information items today.
Second.
I mean, action items. I have a second. Do I, does anyone oppose pulling item four and postponing it for two weeks? I think we've got a whole year since, before we have another graduation.
Yeah, we've got a whole year.
Okay, we don't have anyone that opposes. So, the, uh, motion to pull this item passes unanimously and we will add it to next board meeting. Action items, um, the certification of signatures. I need, does anyone need a five-minute break or? Okay, we're going to take, can I do a three-minute? Cause we've got so many action items, three minutes. Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Action. I told them no. Yeah. Okay, we have one public comment. Shirlene, on action item number 19. Is Josh Shirlene here? We're going to skip that for right now and do, um, the certification of signatures. So, I move to approve revised certification of signatures reflecting the replacement of Jamie Ledesma with Kevin Brejknack in column two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Call the question.
We needed two-thirds vote to call the question.
No. Okay, Laney Culver.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. The motion was adopted unanimously. Next, a notice to conduct a public hearing for the Temecula Valley Unified School District Selpa Annual Service Plan and Annual Budget Plan for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
I have to make the motion.
I heard it.
I move to conduct a public hearing. Do I have a second? That was seconded by Steve. Schwartz? Wiersma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson? Yes. Motion adopted unanimously. All right. A notice to conduct a public hearing. I move to provide notice to conduct a public hearing regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, for the 2025-26 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Schwartz? Wiersma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson? Yes. All right, we will conduct a public hearing. I move to conduct a public hearing for the 2025-26 Local Accountability Plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No, then the motion is adopted unanimously. All right, we're going to conduct the public hearing for action item number four. This is the time and place designated for the public hearing regarding the 2025-26 Local Control Accountability Plan. I declare the hearing now open at 7:14 PM. Is there any discussion? Nope. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on the 2025-26 LCAP? All right. If there are no comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing end time is still 7:14. The 7:15. Wait, let's give it, oh, there we go, 7:15 PM. All right. The next is a resolution number 2024-25.34, Transfer of Appropriations for the 2025-26 School Year. I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25.34, Transfer of Appropriations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there anyone that opposes? All right, the motion passes unanimously. I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25-35, Allowing Temporary Transfers of Monies Between Any Fund to Any Fund in the 2025-26 School Year, Fiscal Year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, then the motion passes unanimously. I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25-36, Authorizing the District to Make Necessary Year and Transfers Between Major Object Codes and Budget Revisions for the Fiscal Year 2024-25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion passes unanimously. I move to conduct a public hearing for the 2025-26 Budget at the Governing Board Meeting to be held on June 10th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion pass, passes unanimously. I move to conduct a public hearing for the 2025-26 Budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion is adopted unanimously. Will now conduct a public hearing on action item number nine. This is the time and place designated for the public hearing to review and consider the 2025-26 Budget. I declare the hearing now open at 7:17 PM. Do we have staff ready to discuss the item? Mrs. Lash?
Uh, good evening. I'm going to need 20 minutes tonight. It's a big one.
All right. Does the board approve 20 minutes? No one opposes? Okay, per se.
Thank you. So, I just want to start off by apologizing. I've been a little under the weather lately, so if I sound a little hoarse, I apologize. So, with that, I am so proud and honored to be here tonight to present the 25-26 adopted budget. But as always, there's an entire team of people that have spent months putting this document together and I just have the pleasure and honor of being here to present it to you tonight. Tonight, we're going to look at kind of a, a little bit more than we typically do and there's a reason for that. We're going to talk a little bit about California economy and how that translates to our personal financial situation here in TVUSD. We'll get into the estimated actuals and adopted budget. We'll talk about staffing changes. And then lastly, we'll talk about the road ahead. So, with that, I'll start off by talking about California economy and just some, uh, information for those that might not be aware. California has a general fund, just like we have a general fund here locally. This chart here shows where California general, California's general fund gets its revenue. The majority of the revenue in California, generated in California's general fund come from the big three taxes. Personal income tax, sales tax, and corporate tax. Those are often referred to as the big three. I've said many times that California has a very progressive tax system. What that means is we, a lot of our tax revenue comes from a very small population of Californians. The top 1% of earners, half of that comes from 150,000 people in a state with a population of 40 million. 150,000, that's a small, small group of people. So, that's why we say it's, uh, California economy can be very volatile. And that's really important for us to understand when we start talking about how the California's general fund money is spent, which we'll get to in two slides. So, I just wanted to start off with this understanding of where California's revenue is generated from. The majority come from those big three taxes. So, at the May revision, those big three taxes over a three-year period of time went from the numbers on the bar on the left to the numbers in the bar on the right, which is a decrease of $4.8 billion less in projected revenue just from four months ago. So, we received financial projections in January at the governor's budget. And four months later in May, they reduced those projections at the state level by $4.8 billion, meaning it looks like California's revenue projections are going to go down significantly. Why that matters? This is how California's general fund money is spent. The largest portion of the state's general fund is spent on, guess what? K-12 education, us. So, how big that pie is, is based on how well California does. And then how much of that pie is divvied up to public education? You can see all of the competing interests within California's general fund. So, that's why it matters where those revenues come from because that determines how big the pie is. And then we always get a proportionate share of that pie because of what's called Proposition 98. Prop 98 is a constitutional amendment adopted by California voters in 1988 and it establishes a minimum funding guarantee for TK through 14. So, this includes... a minimum funding guarantee for TK through 14, so this includes community colleges. And it's a minimum funding level that the state is required to provide out of that pie, out of that general fund, for TK through community college or TK through 14, as they call it, education. Why does that matter? Because we often talk about COLA. COLA is a completely separate calculation that says, here's how much you should get, TVUSD, more than you got last year. But whether or not the state can afford it depends on those revenue collections. So COLA is funded by Prop 98. So even more importantly, COLA can be reduced if the state says, we don't have enough money to fund that COLA. And that's happened many times where the state applies a deficit, because Prop 98, we didn't receive enough in California tax collections to fund the full COLA. So that's why we're talking about that tonight, because when you listen to the news and when you receive articles, you hear a lot about the California economy. Well, why does that matter to us? Because it has a direct correlation on the funds that we receive. And we'll talk about Temecula Valley Unified School District specifically in a few slides. So here was the takeaway from the May revision. Unemployment is up. GDP is trending down. Inflation is high. Revenue is slowing, and housing permits are flat. All of those things equate to a contraction or a slowing down in the economy. All of this is kind of bad news. Rainy day is here. The only thing in this slide that was a little bit of good news is domestic migration. So that's the population in California. Historically, the last few years, more people have been moving out of California than have been moving in, meaning our population has been decreasing. The one bit of good news that we heard is in 2025 and 2026, they're expected the population to actually start growing again, which was the only bit of good news that we kind of heard at the state level regarding the economy. So now time to talk about what all of that means to TVUSD. So what changed from January until May, just four months later? Look at that top chart. That's our LCFF revenue. As all of us know, LCFF revenue is our bread and butter. That's the lion's share of the revenue we receive. COLA came down in every single year in our multi-year projections. 25-26, $714,000 reduction, that's manageable. But look at 26-27 and 27-28. Those are significant reductions to our projected revenue from our main funding source, and it happened in a four-month period of time. So that was of great concern. And again, 24-25 and 25-26 COLAs, those are set. But 26-27 and 27-28, those are still projections. So we still have to wait and see how those actually come in. There was a lot of one-time funding proposals included in the May revision in that bottom-right green box totaling about $10 million in one-time revenue, which will be great if we get it. But the Senate has already come out and said, don't give that TK add-on. School districts don't need it, which is $7.5 million to TVUSD. So we're not holding our breath. We didn't build any of these things into our budget, because there's still lots of question marks out there as if we'll even get any of those. Okay? The last thing that was in the May revision that could impact us financially is, there is a proposal to change the way that ELOP is distributed into a tiered system where districts, you guessed it, with higher unduplicated pupil percentages get more, and districts like Temecula with lower unduplicated pupil percentages get less. So it's a redistribution of ELOP funds. That is still a proposal. If it comes to fruition and how that negatively impacts is still to be determined. Again, nothing in that green area was built into our May revision, but they're all still lingering out there. And then the last thing that came up in the May revision, bottom-left in the blue box, so we just talked about Prop 98 being a minimum funding guarantee for the first time ever. The governor has decided that he is going to underfund Prop 98 and not distribute the full minimum guarantee to school districts to the tune of $1.3 billion, with a, we'll give you a settle-up later. So obviously, there's a lot of concern and opposition to this. We believe that this does not follow the spirit of the law for Prop 98, but as of now, that is what's built into the May revision. It equates to about $214 per ADA that the governor is withholding for a later point in time. So you may hear about that quite a bit. So here's a snapshot of our multi-year projections. Revenues continue to increase, but so do expenditures. That gray area is showing our deficit. We are spending more than we are bringing in, to the tune of about $25 to $30 million each year in this budget. You can see the bottom row in green is our true savings account, and it is going down at a rapid rate as it stands at the adopted budget. But we're going to talk about that in a few slides. It's important to know what assumptions were used when building the multi-year projections. Look at the COLAs. Remember I said 24, 25, and 25, 26 are already set? 26, 27, and 27, 28 projected COLAs, those are high numbers. A COLA that starts with a 3 is a really robust COLA. So whether or not COLA comes in that high, number one, and whether the state of California can actually fund that COLA, we will have to wait and see, but those two numbers make me very nervous. Nevertheless, that's what's built into our multi-year projection. Our ADA continues to decline year over year, which is very common in the state of California. Our unduplicated pupil percentage is expected to stay fairly flat, which drives our LCAP funding. Why our LCAP funding is continuing to go up is that also receives the COLA adjustment. So our LCAP funding will go up year over year based on those assumptions. And remember, LCAP funding is embedded in the LCFF revenue that I'll show you on the next slide. Calstrs rates are staying flat. Calpers rates are going down. Oh, there's a typo. That should be an L, not an S. Calpers rates are going to go down next year and then climb the following two years. So with that, nothing new in revenue. We did receive the last of the one-time money in 24-25, and everything else kind of flattens out after this year. Here's the story to be told locally. Of the $310 million that we're receiving in LCFF sources next year, only 31% of that comes from local property taxes. So the LCFF calculator spits out a number and says, you get $310 million. But from where does that money come? Some districts have lots of property taxes that cover that full amount. Temecula only receives enough to cover 31% of that $310 million. We rely on the state for the other 70% of our money. So we are desperately tied to the state's general fund in order to fund the rest of that dark blue shaded area. That's why we care what's happening at California, because we are nowhere near being able to fund our full LCFF revenue through local property taxes. You see that small little sliver that says EPA? That's the Education Protection Account. I'm going to be talking about that over the next few years. The Education Protection Account was established in 2012. It's voter-approved debt through Prop 30, and it basically is personal income tax on the highest earners in California. It was then extended in 2016 through Prop 55, and it expires in 2030. So in five years from now, that blue bar will not be there. And that blue bar helps the state offset its obligation to what it pays school districts. So if Prop 55 wasn't there, the state would have had to have come up with an additional $7.8 billion in 23-24, $14.8 billion in 24-25, $12 billion in 25-26. So you can see that if the voters do not approve this, another extension in 2030, the state of California is going to be in a really bad place trying to fund Prop 98 and the minimum funding guarantee to school districts. So you're going to be hearing a lot about the Education Protection Account as 2030 approaches. Okay, so that's all on the revenue side. Expenditures, not much of a story to tell here, other than the cost of things continue to rise, including costs of employing additional staff, needing additional resources. All of us feel this in our personal lives, as we're outspending our money and our money doesn't go as far as it used to. And so costs will continue to rise. One thing I will point out is that books and supplies row, we have some significant investments and significant costs built into our multi-year projections for technology refresh. We have textbook adoptions coming up. We've got the Universal Radio Project. All of these things are significant investments that cost a lot of money upfront one time that we're going to have to be very watch closely and diligent about being able to fund those things. Just a side note, that the general fund does make contributions to these four programs, including routine maintenance, deferred maintenance, transportation, and special education. And speaking of special education, I just wanted to highlight all of the programs that we're going to offer in 2025-26 in our special education programs. We do an incredible job serving our students with special needs, and in fact, we attract students and families from all over to attend our special education program. So I wanted to make sure to highlight those on this slide. Staffing changes for next year. Looking at certificated staffing changes. This is in relation to enrollment changes and programmatic needs. So a few things are happening next year. Number one, our enrollment in special education continues to grow. We're adding another grade level to Summit Academy, right? We're adding eighth grade next year. TK, we're adding a three-month birthday window, so we're expecting that the number of TKers coming in will increase based on adding that three-month birthday window. But also, the staffing ratio of adult to students is going from one per every 12 students to one per every 10 students. So that's going to necessitate more staff. So for certificated positions, we're anticipating increasing FTEs by 22.5 to a total of 1,498 FTE for next year. For classified staff, for the same reasons, enrollment and programmatic changes, we're projecting an increase of 6.2 FTE for a total of 1,204 classified staff. For administrative changes, the only change we are proposing next year is in the LCAP, which is a reclassification from a principal on special assignment to a director for 224 days. This is not an increase in FTE. I think the total cost with salary and benefits is about $12,400 in total difference in cost. But this is the only administrative change, and it was built into the LCAP for 25-26. Here's components of our ending fund balance. I talked about our rainy day funds, which is down across the bottom, what we kind of monitor. And it goes from $61 million down to $7.7 million over the next three years if we do nothing. But I'd like to talk briefly about addressing the budget shortfall. There are two approaches. You can get from here to here gradually and slowly over time, which is option on the left, moderate descent. Or you can take the cliff approach, where you do nothing, and then you take all the cuts all at once, which is the option on the right, which I am not recommending. So if we do nothing, again, here's the slide that you already saw in the very beginning of the presentation, looking at that savings account, looking at that net decrease, the gray area and bottom kind of mint area are the two rows that I'd like to bring your attention to. My personal recommendation is slowly chipping away at it, that moderate descent, if you will. I think if we start sooner rather than later and just attempt to start reducing our budget, if we were able to reduce by $3 million each year for the next three years, which in a budget our size is manageable. Look at what that changes in the gray area. It takes our net decrease to a much more manageable level, and look at our savings account. It flattens out, and it remains healthy through 27-28. But that would require action now, starting this year. If we, another approach is we wait a year. We don't do anything in 25-26, and we wait till 26-27. If we do that, I would recommend that we do a little bit more. So you would cut $5 million starting in 26-27, and another $5 in 27-28. You can see your savings account kind of looks healthy, but it looks much better in the other scenario, even though you're cutting $10 million here, $9 million in the previous one. But you see, the faster you act, the stronger the impact that there is. Last option is the cliff approach. We do nothing for two years, status quo, keep spending all the money that we were planning on spending, and you attempt to cut $10 million in 27-28. Again, the gray number still looks good. The savings account looks okay, but the impact to the district to cut $10 million in a single year would be very drastic. And so this is not the approach that I recommend that we take. At the end of the day, it is a structural deficit, and my recommendation is that we start chipping away at it right away. So what to be on the lookout in the future? Number one, the governor's adopted budget. How much, if any, of that $10 million in one-time money are we going to get? And are there going to be any changes to ELOP funding, which then might have an impact on what we're able to offer in ELOP services? Actual enrollment is a huge factor. Everything's based on a projection right now. So actual enrollment will drive a lot of things, our actual unduplicated pupil percentage. Both of those numbers have a direct impact on funding. Federal funding. If there are any changes, what's going to happen with federal funding? We won't know well into the year, so we'll have to keep an eye out for that. And then lastly, what I opened with, how's the California economy doing? How are those top earners performing? Because those will all have a direct impact on how TVUSD is doing. And so tonight is the public hearing and the presentation. I will be back in two weeks. You won't have to hear from me again, don't worry. But at that point, you'll be actually adopting the LCAP and adopting the budget. The state will adopt its budget by June 30. And then, as always, our budget is a living, breathing document. We always monitor and adjust as needed. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I think we have public comments now.
Are we doing questions first or public comments?
I'm going to stick with the agenda, just to make sure that... So is there anyone who wishes to comment on the 2025-26 budget? No? Okay. And then, there we go. Thank you. Dr. Kamroski?
Thanks, Ms. Lash, for the presentation. My question is, back in March 11, when we did the district raises for the union, the teachers, the non-teachers, district staff, and the subs, baked into that, I believe you mentioned, there was a contingency based upon the state reporting out. Has any of that impacted COLA and non-COLA? Because I know we had offset as well as COLA.
Yeah, great question and great memory. So we said that there was 3% for certificated staff for this year. That would only continue if COLA came in at 7%, I believe it was, which it did not. So we assumed that 2% would go away, and only the 1% that CSCEA and management got would continue for certificated in the future. And in fact, on April, June 24, the next board meeting will be bringing those salaries with that exact statement back to the board to solidify COLA didn't come in higher, so those salaries fall off.
And then what about the non-COLA coming out of the general fund for the raises? Like, was there contingency based?
I think we're taking turns with questions.
I think...
You're okay? Okay, thanks.
And so we did say that if some of that one-time money came to fruition, we would use that for the off-schedule. So we're going to cross our fingers and know by the time we close our books whether or not some of that one-time money came in, and then we'll use that to pay for the one-time expenditures.
All right. And we'll know that by next meeting, what that looks like?
Hopefully, the state doesn't have to adopt its budget till June 30, but we will typically know by June 24.
Okay, Mr. Barm, did you have a question? Or Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, Nicole, thank you. And Emile and I sat through a budget session with Nicole, and we went actually line by line through the needs and the wants. And it's amazing, when you look at everything that's in there, how complicated it is. But I just want to add one thing, just a point of information. Some of you know I'm on the CSBA Legislative Committee. We have a meeting next week, but I just got an alert that the legislature's proposed budget underfunds the integrity of Prop 98, and they're asking everyone to please contact budget underfunds the integrity of Prop 98, and they're asking everyone to please contact your state assemblyman, state assembly person, Kate Sanchez, your state senator, Kelly Sayardo, to please ask them to make sure that the governor funds Prop 98 fully, because every dollar he cuts out is a dollar that comes out of our rainy day fund and that we're going to have to make up. So it's really important. Contact Kate Sanchez and Kelly Sayardo, ask them to ask the governor to fully fund Prop 98. And when I have my meeting next week with Mrs. Lash and several districts across the state, particularly one that I worked for, has laid off hundreds of teachers, 260 teachers. It's a larger district, but it's a testament to how well you and your team and the rest of the executive cabinet has managed our finances, because we didn't really let anybody go. But in that meeting with Mr. Schwartz, I want, I would like you to outline what happened in that meeting in a little more detail so that the public knows what kind of a process we go through to determine what our actual budget's going to be, because I think it's really important. And I would like you to do that. I mean, I could, but you'll do it better.
Sure, yeah. So every single year, and I mentioned at the beginning that this is three and a half months in the making, in February, we start budget meetings, and we literally sit down with every single school, every single department, and we project enrollment by grade, by school. We project programmatic needs. We, like I said, special education, CTE, I mean, it is a grueling process, and we have everybody in the room. I think you sat in on Great Oaks budget meeting, and there were probably thirty...
Twenty-four, I counted.
Twenty-four people in the room.
Yeah.
Because there are special education implications, CTE implications, there's athletics, there's... So every single person that might have a comment or a consideration for the budget for Great Oak High School is sitting in that room. And the site, or the department, or whosoever turn it is, will go through what they believe their wants are for the year, what their needs are for the year, and we literally create a massive list every single year of what the asks are, what is new. And so an example is the contracts for our SRDs has increased. That goes on the list, not because it's something that we're not going to do, but it's an awareness of how much things cost. And so all new items go on a list, and then we sit down as an executive cabinet and go line by line and consider what do we have to have, what do we, what can we hold off for another year? In years where there's more money, it's complicated. What's the priority? How do we spend new dollars? This year, there's no money. And so it's what do, what can we say no to, what can we kick the can on? And we did that. And it takes a long, long time. And in that spreadsheet, we say, line by line, yes or no. And then our accountants go back through, and all the things that we say yes to, they build into the budget. And all of that gets compiled, and that's how you get to the budget that you have presented tonight.
Mrs. Weersma?
So statement and question for you. I know that with Title IX, the Department of Justice is threatening to cut funds in California unless we comply as a district. And there was a letter sent by Harmeet Dillon specifically addressing the CIF Bylaw 300. I'm sure you've seen that letter. It's something that Dr. Komraski and I emailed that we would like to bring forward to the agenda, because I believe the date was June 9th. And federally, they were asking for districts to comply. It does have to do with women's sports and so forth. We all know there's controversy throughout the state. And my question for you is, one, wouldn't you think it wise to go ahead and address this as a board? And two, do you have concerns of this adding additional possible cuts in the future, depending upon what we do as a district and the state of California?
So the guidance that we've received is that California is acting as one, not individual districts. And so the guidance that we've received is to let the state respond on behalf of all school districts in the state of California. And so that's what has happened. And our understanding is that, that our funding is not threatened or jeopardized at this point. But, you know, there's a lot of unknown with regard to federal funding at this point.
Was that as per Tony Thurmond? Because I know he wrote a letter as well. Is that where your thinking is? Because I do know they were calling upon individual districts to make that decision, so it's hard to know, because that's, that's a battle that's being meted out. But I'd like to make sure we're doing our due diligence and addressing it, whether or not the state's going to come in and be that answer-all, or whether we take that individual responsibility. Locally, I know that's what I would prefer with Dr. Komraski.
Yeah, I believe it came from California Department of Education, but Dr. Woods, is that your understanding as well?
That is correct.
So this, anything related to the budget? The 2025-2026 budget? I think we've all had time to ask questions.
I got one more. This is me just after...
I think, so if, please make sure the questions are directed to the 2024-20, or the 25-26 budget, and then, yeah, if you'll just briefly answer their questions. So we'll give, Dr. Komraski, I need board consensus. Dr. Komraski, you get another question? Do you get another question? Do you need another question? No? Do you want one more? I'm done, so we'll give two more questions.
This is just me on the learning curve after almost two years now, you know, layering these budget presentations, and my understanding of them. Do we get full ADA funds per student if a student just shows up for one period at TVUSD? Or do they have to show up for the whole period? And now I'm thinking about even that.
That's a great question and a common misconception. There is no minimal amount of time required for a student to collect ADA. So they just have to show up while attendance is being taken, and we get attendance for the entire day.
That's really good to hear, because there's a lot of truancy. Sometimes I'm seeing these on school disciplines, like, wow, this... And then I wonder collectively, but that doesn't impact, as long as they show up for the first... Okay.
As long as they show up when attendance is being taken, any portion of the day. So...
Oh, any portion of the day? Doesn't even have to be for...
Any portion of the day.
Ah, all right.
So we've seen kids where they show up, they're five minutes, they say, "My tummy hurts." They go to the front office. As long as attendance has been taken, we get apportionment for them for that day.
All right, thank you.
And that's a common misunderstanding, so I'm glad you asked that question.
Mr. Barham?
Okay. So I know in the meeting that we had with Mr. Schwartz, with the Budget Subcommittee, and correct me if I'm wrong, all the wants were denied.
Correct. We only said yes to the things that were needs.
Okay. So in terms of a mindset going forward, and this, Mr. Superintendent, would maybe be for you as well, and for members of the executive cabinet, are we strategically in a place, mindset-wise, where we're going to be able to move forward and accomplish what one of the three S's are, saving money? Are we actually in that place where we're looking at our departments and strategically making decisions that are going to move us towards those $3 million reductions? I mean...
Yeah, it is a mindset. It's also a practice. You have to schedule time each week to do this. The budget process, as you saw, is the starting point, and then we take it from here and start to question line items, as we just did tonight, in terms of conferences and travel positions. You know, the budget is predominantly about people. It's the business we're in. So it's really positions. If a person leaves a position, do we, do we rehire for that position? Maybe we leave it vacant. There's all those kinds of decisions that we make, and we will be doing that on a week... Well, we've already started. We do it on a weekly basis now.
Mr. Barham, did you have another question? Did you have another question?
I just, I just think the mindset towards making reductions is very important, because I don't see it even up here at times when we're voting on things. It's, we're, we need to save money, and we need to make decisions that are tough decisions that regard people. And, you know, I'm not sure I see it even up here all the time. So that's why I bring it up.
Then one more comment from Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah, Nicole, so the decisions we made tonight about contracts and things that we're, whatever we, is that already included in the budget? So none, in other words, we didn't add anything to the deficit that we're going to face tonight?
That is correct. We did not expand the budget. All of that was included, however...
I think that's what Emile was asking.
But the presentation is saying we need to start making changes now in the current year to make reductions. So maybe some of the things that we did have budgeted, maybe we scale back on, is what I think I'm hearing. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more quick question. It should be a quick one, and it's directly applicable.
Okay. Do I have consensus for her to ask another question? She's at three questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So I appreciate the fact that we're looking at the budget, we're talking about positions. I did notice there was an FTE that went from a posta position, now morphing into a director's position. I listened to you say that it was only about $12,000 or so, but I guess my question is, one, will that be on the personnel list? And I know in looking at positions, if we can be transparent in talking about that, Mr. Barham, back in the day, we discussed that, looking at the district office growing, making sure we want to be cognizant of that, and especially now. So obviously, we're not adopting this tonight, but that was something that came to the attention of the board. And we didn't receive an update on that posta position, so now going into a directorship, I'd just like to be sure we can address that and that it's transparent whenever that time is correct before the next budget adoption.
Mrs. Lash, is this another action item on the agenda?
It will be at a future item. It was built into the budget in that manner. And we, we, this is going to be part of prioritizing, and in our opinion, given the needs of the LCAP and those special populations of students, this is just applying the appropriate title to the work that's already being done for the last year through the LCAP.
Okay, I just want to, this is, I need everyone to make sure that we are talking about the 2025-26 budget specifically, the presentation that she gave. Mr., or Dr. Komraski, you have a comment, then Mr. Barham has a comment. And then I really think we need to wrap it up, because we're going to have to push other items to the next meeting if we don't.
Just, just directed toward Mr. Barham, when you talk about saving money, the mindset, the practice, I would consider not going to CSBA. There's four people going.
Okay, point of order. This is not related.
You didn't want us to go to Washington.
Point of order.
And this is the new mindset, so it's consistent.
Point of order. Nope, point of order. No more comments from Dr. Komraski. Please do not address his comment and just address Mrs. Lash, and then we're going to close the hearing.
I'm not. I wanted to make a point about the principal on special assignment, because I know that I spoke against it last year. I made a point this year in shadowing that position, not just observing it, but shadowing it, because I knew that that position would come up again at this point in time. And I can definitively say that the post's expertise in the areas that she was given responsibility to take care of, that her expertise in, in, in the area of special education, which is a very hard needle to move, and we were required, otherwise, we're going to be under the guise of technical assistance to make those moves. She has great expertise in that area. She has done a great job, like I said. I mean, I particularly and specifically shadowed her to make sure that she was doing direct, director-level work. And in terms of the achievement data coming in for special ed, the needle has been moved, and I believe that that promotion has been earned.
Okay, we're no longer on topic, so if there are no...
Thank you for saying that after he spoke, point of order towards you.
Why didn't you call point of order while he was speaking?
You know what? You're the board president. Just be consistent.
And the board should have seen that data.
So, all right, so everyone, everyone's out of order, and if there's no more comments related to the 2025-26 budget, then I declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing end time is 7:56 PM. And I would like to ask and remind all board members that anyone is welcome to call point of order, not just the president. The next action item is the 2024-25-38 Governing Board of Temecula Valley Unified School District's Support of Applications for Eligibility Determination. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-25-38 of the Governing Board of the Temecula Valley Unified School District, approving the filing of school facility program applications and authorizing district representatives to sign and submit documents to OPSC that are associated with the SAB-administered programs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, then the motion is passed unanimously. Next, I move to authorize staff to prepare and submit application for school facilities program funding for qualified projects. Do I have a second?
Which item, which item? When are we on, 10?
11.
11, okay.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Does anyone oppose? There, nobody opposes, so the motion passes unanimously. Next, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-25-37, authorize a levy of special taxes within the following community facility district numbers. 1, comma, 89-1, comma, 2,000-1, comma, number 2, 2002-1, comma, 2,02-2, comma, 2,000, 3-2, comma, 2,004-1, comma, 2,005-1, comma, 2010-1, comma, 2011-1, 2013-1, 2014-1, 2,005-1H, 2017-1, 2018-1, and 2021-1 of the Temecula Valley Unified School District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? The motion passes unanimously. I move to approve the classified reclassification for maintenance worker v. low-voltage technician to maintenance worker v. low-voltage and telephone technician. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion adopts, is adopted unanimously. I move to approve the CSEA-TVUSD memorandum of understanding Student Workers Internship Program 2025, 418, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? The motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve the CSEA-TVUSD memorandum of understanding Driver Training Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve the variable term waiver requests for the 2025-26 school year. Do I have a second? Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve the board assignment list for the 2025-26 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? No one opposes, so the motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve the 2025-26 board planning calendar. Do I have a second?
Discussion. Anything that, I know you two worked on this.
Can we have a second before we open discussion?
Second.
Okay. Then we have discussion. Lenny, will you put the timers up? Before we open discussion, who presented this on the agenda?
I think Emile and I.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, it's pretty straightforward, so if you want to go ahead with your discussion.
I just wanted to ask, since you two worked on it, anything you want to highlight that stands out? I mean, I have the document, but anything significant that you, significant that you want to mention? And is it only the blue highlights that have changed with the last years, or is...
The blue is what changed.
The blue is what changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We added a bullying in school discipline.
We added a bullying in school discipline.
Which I think is really good.
We added the financial audit and the budget adoption of an estimated annuals. So that's kind of like a precursor to approving the budget.
Yep, okay.
And anyone's welcome to add on anything that they think that's not there. It's a working document. So we can always change it if we need to.
Good. I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to know if you guys had anything to say, and other than that, I'm.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Could I ask a quick question about the schedule? So looking at it, with, with the conversation that we just had in terms of moving the needle with students in specific categories that we were hoping to move the needle with, do you see one of these categories covering that? Because what I put at the top was the posta position because Mr. Barham just mentioned there was substantial gains that were there. And, and I wrote that up here before I even thought much about it, knowing we had appointed that a little less than a year ago. So do you see that fitting in somewhere with the discussion so that we can kind of crystallize knowing where those gains were?
We'll know about the gains when the LCAP comes out and, right? And the CASP scores in October.
Right.
And I don't think I said significant gains. I says, I think we moved the needle.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm interested in seeing what data you evaluated for that because I'm, I'm excited if we're doing that.
Before you answer, is that related to the board agenda planning calendar?
Not really.
Okay, then let's move on. Is there any questions related to the board agenda planning calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to see that in October. Or sometime, so it does apply. I'm just saying when the time is right, that's the indicator.
So the committee, we have Mrs. Weirzma specifically requesting that those, can you be specific? What do you want to see in October?
The indicators with what Mr. Barham just suggested between the LCAP and what he's seen.
Will that be, let me ask Ms. Velez, that will be presented when you do the LCAP? When do we usually see those indicators?
So we can present it, we can present it in October. We can. So there's some flexibility in that. You will see on there that there's LCAP actions and services that is in January of 2026 that we can present on. The other indication you have here is you have the ESS staff development piece. You could expand that, and you could actually include just progress. You could include it into that as well. So you have some options.
Because I, I agree with Mrs. Weirzma. With the LCAP, I wanted to see where we've gone from red to, rather than have a basic explanation of the LCAP, maybe we could start looking at, like, where are we going in what areas? Yeah, the data.
Okay, for Lisa. Lisa, can we do this like in, in November? I mean, the public will release CASP data in October. Can we see something on the LCAP in November with relation to all of our sub-populations?
So there's a couple different indicators, well, there are many different indicators within LCAP, and they come out in different periods of time.
That's what I thought.
So the public release of CASP data will happen in October.
Correct.
The dashboard data and how we have moved from one indicator color to another will not be released this year until November 15th. It's been moved up this year by a month. Usually, we get it December 15th. So that's why you'll, you'll see on this document here that we do an LCAP actions and service, and that's usually a dashboard presentation as well in January, where you'll remember in January, I came up here and I talked about like how many of our indicators had moved from red into yellow into green. And so normally, we do that in January. This year, if we wanted to move the dashboard piece into December, we could probably do that just because November 15th butts up to Thanksgiving holiday.
Mr. Schwartz, real quick, can we just ask that the committee take this information that is working on the board agenda planning calendar? Will you take this into consideration and then next time we present it?
Yeah, we, we don't want you to release the information until you have it, and you had a chance to look at it. And then when you do, you let us know, and then we'll, we'll try to fit it in, okay?
So we'll let the planning committee make sure that it's on the calendar.
Yeah.
Is there any additional questions about the calendar? Okay, if there's no additional questions, we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, one thing that's very important is that we have not finished the governing board handbook. This, yeah, when, sorry. It should have been done in the first couple months, and we're really behind. So, board president, this, this really falls on you, but we can talk about it now, when this is going to be agendized. So we get signatures and finish that officially.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask the, the board agenda planning committee to please consider that we also need to somehow finish the workshop, and if you guys will consider that in your calendar.
We can discuss it right now outside of the committee.
It's not related to the calendar.
Of course it is. It's something that can be put on the calendar. And if there's nothing else you want to add to the governing board handbook, we can just sign the governing board handbook.
We need board consensus. So do I have three people on the board that want to schedule the board workshop?
It's scheduled for January.
That's a, of course, yeah. And here's, yeah, and here's the thing.
We had it, but it wasn't.
Yeah, and if we don't need to add anything more, we can all sign it outside of the board meeting and be done with it. That could all happen right here.
Okay, so, so first.
We'll, we'll get to it.
Okay, so, so I, so I, I motion then. I'm going to make a formal motion since we're all just talking, that the board subcommittee that works on the board planning calendar consider the workshop and finishing up this year. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second and a comment. We'll sit down with Linnae, go through all the changes, get them all written in there, and then bring it back to the board for signatures.
So the next, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone that opposes? All right, no one opposes, so my motion to include the governing board workshop with the board planning subcommittee passes unanimously. The next motion to approve the 2025-26 board planning calendar was made and seconded. Is there anyone that opposes this calendar with the amendment that we're going to make sure that we have LCAP and the workshop included? Okay. Nobody opposes? Then the motion pass, passes unanimously. Next, I move to adopt. Oh. Oh, we did have, are we going to take, okay, we have public comments on parental notifications.
Josh Sterling?
You'll be able to tell which part, ChatGPT helped me write. The proposed board policy 5145.2 Freedom of Speech and Expression. It's one of the attachments here. Is that, okay?
Yeah, it's just been amended, but go ahead.
Oh, I know, right?
Okay, good.
This policy imposes an overbroad restriction on student speech, particularly through the requirement of parent permission slips, which act as a prior restraint and chills students' constitutional right to protest. While students may, while schools may set reasonable time, place, and manner limits, these must be content neutral, narrowly tailored, and must not block meaningful expression. Limiting protests to lunch only, in designated areas, and only with parental approved goes too far. It undermines the spirit of taker versus demoin, and that effectively senses students' voices that deserve to be heard. That was the smart people. For protest to work, it must disrupt. It must be inconvenient. It must be seen. It should never be dangerous. But there is a good chance that the purpose of the protest from a student's perspective is in an opposition to what their parents voted for. Do you think a parent is going to sign a permission slip for that? But how else will power be spoken to except in protest? A permission slip is nothing but a prior restraint of First Amendment freedom. It's censorship masquerading as safety. So those are the thoughts. If we can just find a happy, security and freedom are mutually exclusive concepts. The more freedom you have, the less security you have. But we need to find a balance, actually, let me rephrase that. This board needs to find the balancing point, and it requires a lot of discussion. And I really hope that we really try to preserve what's the point of protesting if it's at a place designated by the schools, at a time designated by the schools, with your parents' permission? I don't know many protests in history that would fall into that category. And I quote that I love from my daughters is a polite girl rarely makes history. I don't want my kids to think that protesting has to be so sanitized. It becomes flaccid. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm actually going to move, the student walkout has been reviewed by Diedrich and who is the other person? No, Diedrich works with another person. His name's on it. What?
Jeffrey Torres.
Jeffrey, Jeffrey Torres have reviewed this and made changes. We pulled that up. So this would be, this will be considered a first read, and we'll put this on the agenda for the second read. And then I would like to pull this from the parental notification right now. I'll just point out that a lot of the language has been scheduled, or has been changed. Will you scroll up? To the point where, hold on. Keep scrolling. Oh, I don't have his comments, that we cannot require parental notification. So that part has been removed. We can, we can't provide per, yeah. So that was removed by, it was reviewed and removed. That's why I was like, well, we're going to keep going. So this, this will be the first read. Everyone can review it. It will be on the next agenda with, now it has been reviewed by an attorney. So again, people are getting used to the way I do things. I think as a board, we should, and Mr. Barham and Mr. Schwartz, as a board, we should do all we can before we present it for attorney review. So when you see items in information, those items are not there for action. And as you, as you saw tonight, one item was removed from information. One was referred to committee. Several times, people have seen us pull items from information, and they still haven't come back. So a lot of times, we're getting conversations started. If you see my name by something, know that sometimes it's a conversation starter if it's in information. So this will be the first read, but we're not going to read all through, through it all. Right now, everyone can read through it on their own, and it will be presented without the red lines as recommended by the attorney. The next part of parental notification. This is Mr. Schwartz.
It's just a listing.
Will you click on that? So this is a preliminary list. It's also a working document that can be added to. This is what we will put on the homepage for parents to click on, and they'll be able to click on the board policy. We'll need to add a few, like if we do the walkout policy, we'll need to add that. The accommodation policy, if that's approved tonight, then we'll need to do that. Okay, the next one. This one was. Okay, this is what I call my, this is the accommodation that Mr. Barham and I, and I worked on. This has been vetted by the attorneys and approved. And Mrs. Weirzma and I talked about it when we were working on the parental notification, that religious accommodation and mental health accommodation will be provided. It, it's already written into, into law that we provide an ed code, that we provide religious and mental health accommodation. We just put it in our board policy so that parents are aware of it. The next one. No, what, what's this one? This is student wellness. This has to do with billing of, right now, we bill Medi-Cal. So this is that we parental notification, and the entire policy was updated by Mr. DeMarco and Mr. Torres, just so that it's compliant with current ed code. But this is parental notification if we're billing for services provided.
Just so people understand, when we bill, we get reimbursed, and it's money that comes back to us for services that are provided to students through Medi-Cal or other providers.
And this just guarantees parental notification.
Yes.
Okay, the next one. Yeah, and then we removed the draft, and we're still working on, I think we have 15 items on the list, and we will be picking them off one by one. So Dr. Kamarowski, I'll make sure I address the language that you sent to Linnae. We just, with so much going on, it's like, I think we'll get four more things done at the next and four more things done.
Okay, that gives me relief.
Because we're having attorneys review it now.
Okay, I was, that gives me relief because I was like, where are they? I'll, I'll talk when it's my turn. I'll, I'll speak to this, unless I can go now.
That's it, so go ahead and comment. I just wanted you to know, there is a list of 15 items, and there, there's so much to do, and I feel like we have a whole army of people helping us. With attorney review, it takes time, so what we're doing is looking at the board policy, amending the language the way we want it to be amended, then sending that to the attorney for review, and then we'll be putting it on the agenda for action. So I should have made the motion and got a second before I started talking about it, yeah. Anyway, so, so I'm going to assume, I'm just going to say, I make them, I make the motion to adopt parental notification minus the draft on freedom of speech and expression. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and then open for comment.
Can I get four minutes, or is it two requesting four? What's going on?
Two and two taking turns.
Two, okay. So I'll start off by saying, yeah, just to be clear, the, we'll call it the record change. The Chino policy was already vetted by Tony DeMarco and Diedrich in their law firm. And then Marietta took it and changed it as the point of contact doing the parental notifying is the principle, like the head site admin. So I think theirs is a little more nuanced, but it's already been legally vetted by two school districts. Then you have the Placenti-Urbilinda Mental Health Policy. That was agendized by me in the May 13th meeting. It'll say Kamarowski Mental Health. That was already vetted by Orbach and Huff, who's our general legal counsel here at that meeting, the whole thing, already vetted. And I bring these up because these are the things that I want to be voted in as a robust, and like I said during the workshop, the more parental rights, the better. All of these, from all five board members, none of these trigger anything related to AB 1955, which is awesome. And then last. Okay, last, on May 13th, I had the addendum agendized. And this goes all the way back to August 22nd, on the very first time we did our parental rights. They were there. One was the student protest walkout. That was vetted by Jonathan Brenner from EBG. But I'm also glad it was re-vetted by, you know, the AALR, I forget the mnemonic law firm. So now it's two sets of eyes, one back, you know, August, you know, of 2023, and a new lawyer now, so it's good to see that. And then we have the, the third party vendors coming to a campus. And then we have the, the library, in-kind donations to where parents have access to all that. So I just want to be clear, those three sets, the Chino Record Policy adopted by Marietta, the Placenti-Urbilinda Mental Health, and then those four addenda items, addendum items, I want to see those coming forward. Because as I said, since I first sworn to now, the more parental rights, the better. I want to see all five of us get as many parental rights as we can voted in.
Time, and I'll address that. We, we are working, we're working on them. It just was, it's been very hectic. I think now that summertime is here, there'll be more time. So I'm hoping on the next agenda, I have more than, because you and I met for two hours. And I think I have a clear understanding of where you want things to go, and you gave me a priority list. So I, I understand that. Just give us some time. There, there's no pushback from us, okay? I'm just asking for more, more time as we, we plug through this. Did you have a question?
So I'm going to piggyback on that. I know you and I sat down and we went through numerous things, which was really helpful. You gave me the draft here, which definitely has changes with the student records. Very clearly, you and I talked about taking that aspect of record change that Chino and Marietta has adopted with a few additional tweaks. So, when I did the deep dive in studying, I did notice that Regulation 5125 does cover student records, but it was last reviewed and adopted in 2018. So, I hear what you're saying about additional changes, but I would hesitate to pass anything on this tonight because what I wanna see is those changes first. It doesn't make mention of a proactive approach in notifying parents should there be an official or unofficial change to student records as discussed, which ensures trust and transparency with our families. So, I kinda feel like the heart of what Dr. Kamarowski and I brought forward together was not found in the long laundry list of important things, things that we needed to read and have, but it left out that really important element. And I just think if we're looking at attachments, it's really important that they're not outdated, that they're revised. I wanna be sure that we have transparency with the community because at times, it's easy to pile all the information up but miss the real aspect of what we wanna be sure is addressed. And it sounds like all of us do. So, I wouldn't vote through that particular aspect, though I think the website and annual notification is viable, but it's not complete and I need to see the full context.
Can you tell me which one, A, B, I took off D. Are you referring to A, B, C, amended non-discrimination harassment? I don't think we have that one on there.
So, I'll give you this, it's the changes to student records.
Yeah, that's not on there, we're still working on it.
Right, so I just wanna be sure. I would not vote this through because I wanna be sure the change, which I know you have enjoyed cross-referencing policy. Right.
Will you email me your changes so that the language that you specifically want?
But you already gave them to me. Like you already, you already came up with it, which is why I was surprised it wasn't there. Right.
Because you and I talked and we haven't like, I haven't had time to marry those ideas. So, I have the policy from Placentia Yorba Linda and from Chino. We met separately regarding change of records. We met regarding suicide night. And then next agenda will be Placentia Yorba Linda, Chino. The four things that you had previously that were removed when Danny was on the board. Like, those aren't on there tonight. All we have on there is the list that Steve compiled. And we have the student wellness, which is pretty much if we're billing. And then the accommodation, that's it. And I removed the freedom of speech and expression. So, if there's anything related to the website, student wellness, or accommodation, we have to address that at the next meeting because I don't have it.
Then we could wait to finalize, is what you're saying.
Yeah, nothing's finalized. I only have three things finalized and it's hardly anything. It's the website, the student wellness, and the accommodation.
Thank you. I'm not interested in piggybacking on anything that Chino or Marietta did or does. Sorry, we are Temecula Valley Unified School District. We're not Chino, we're not Marietta, we're not Placentia, we're no one else. I wanna focus on kids, schools, and saving money. Can we get back to education and stop talking about all these side issues which are irrelevant? You're talking about family issues. If you're a mother and you don't know what your kids are doing, that's your responsibility. If you're a father and you don't know what your kids are reading, that's your responsibility. Let's get back to education. Let's stop talking about all these side issues.
Okay, time. There is so much confusion right now for what is on the agenda. There is three things on the agenda and I want people's comments to be related to them. I put on the agenda, are we going to have a website that gives a list of all the parental notification? Lanay, will you click on A? This is what we're gonna vote on.
Thank you.
Click on A, click on, please. Do we want this on our website? Yes or no? That's the discussion.
Yes.
Okay, number two, religious accommodation. This has been vetted by an attorney. I want, you don't have to answer out loud. Does the board want religious accommodation and mental health accommodation? Number three, do we want to notify, do we want it in board policy that we will notify parents if we are going to bill for, right now, just for Medi-Cal? Do we want a statement that says if they're receiving mental health care services and we're billing for it, the parents will be notified? And then the last one was removed. So, that's it, those three things. Mr. Barham, will you talk on those three things?
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing else on the agenda, just those three things.
Yeah, and the parental notification committee has, you know, it was suspended so that Dr. Anderson could talk to you, Mrs. Weirzma, and to you, Dr. Kamarowski, about your separate issues, your four things, okay? And student records over here. We haven't gone through all of those things yet. I mean, we've only had time to address these things. But it just seems like we're relitigating all of the arguments all over again in terms of what everybody wants. We've already gone through all of those things and you've had your conversations with Dr. Anderson. Now, it's time for the parental rights notification committee to look at what everybody's presented to see what policies you've presented we already have and to do all of that work and then come back with the additional notification and parental rights motions that we're gonna make. But right now, this is all we've had time to do. So, we're gonna vote on these four things, but we're gonna come back, maybe next week with student records. We're gonna come back with all the other things that we need to talk about. Yeah, so, just don't wanna relitigate all those things. We discussed all those things already.
We just need more time, like give us more time.
Yeah, we're getting there.
We can't swallow the whole element.
Okay, so let's vote on these things.
Oh, wait, we have additional comments that were allowed, right?
Yes, but please make sure they're related to the three items. There's only three items. Placentia Yorba Linda is not on here. None of those items are on here. There is so much going on in our district. I'm working a full-time job right now. Like, it's literally a full-time job for me. I'm doing the best I can. Emil, I mean, you're here non-stop. Like, we are trying to get as much done as possible, so we just are taking little baby bites trying to get through this. It's not that I'm trying to put off or the committee is trying to put you off. It's just that two of these items had already been vetted by attorneys prior to the last meeting. And then the last one is just the website. I mean, we haven't done much because there hasn't been time. So, all I'm asking for is patience and like, understand that we heard and I know exactly what you want. We talked about it. It's not on the agenda right now because there wasn't time. I'm, we're not putting it off for any political reasons. We just need more time to get into the policies and have them written up and sent to Diedrich and reviewed by Torres and then put on the agenda for review. So, the time will come.
All right, and just a point of clarity too, because it's been mentioned a few times by me. The three things that me and Jen both want, they've already been vetted, two of them by Huff, our general legal counsel. Because I hear the things like, oh, we've vetted these policies. Yeah, these have already been vetted by our general legal counsel. I just, I just want the optics to be clear. And so, I'm glad you said what you said. So, you're not intentionally pushing me and Mrs. Weirzma what we want off. You're just saying you haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah, perfect.
And that's what you're saying.
And I think we should revet things because there have been some laws that have passed since you had them looked at in California, like 1955. I wanna make sure that nothing, that there haven't, I mean, there's been a lot of legal things that have passed.
And just to be clear, Tony DiMarco fought against the Attorney General and won. You wanna talk about being vetted? The record change is vetted.
Before you go, Steve, can I make the motion?
I'll be right back.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes.
So, having said that, I'm not looking to litigate anything again, just to be perfectly clear. I'm not gonna vote in A when it hasn't been completed. It doesn't make any sense to go on a hope and a prayer and a promise. I respect the work we've done and I believe that. But because the highlighted work here was already done, I expected that to be within the policy that was listed in A because that was an important aspect of student records. So, as I dug and dug and discovered it wasn't there, that changes up, not me litigating this, but saying, I'm gonna wait and pass this until you've had the time to do your work. And that's fine, I understand we're busy and can respect that. But I'm not gonna vote through this umbrella aspect without it being done as we discussed and have it written out so that it's clear to the public and clear to the board.
And more robust, thank you, I agree.
Okay, we'll wait for Mr. Schwartz. So, Mr. Schwartz, I motion to adopt the website and the annual notification as well as the amended board policies. BP 5145, BP 5030, and then, which one did I remove?
Can we separate those?
Fifty-one. And the new exhibit. So, we're gonna, minus the draft of the freedom of speech and expression.
Can we separate each one?
Do I have a, well, first, let me see, do I have a second to?
Second.
Does anyone want to separate these? Can I get consensus? I need three people that agree to separate these.
Please re-explain, what do you mean by separate? There's three things that you want.
She wants to vote separately on each one. I just say we vote on it all together.
I'm confused, you said separately on each one, but then you're saying you'd rather vote with all of them completed. I thought that's what you were saying.
Well, I'm looking at A being completed. A has to be completed with updated policy revisions and the discussions that we've had. But I don't feel as strongly about others. I want the religious accommodations.
I've tried to explain it to everyone, but if you don't understand, there's nothing more I can do. A is a living document. It will be a living document as long as it exists, will always be changed. It's not a policy.
I'm for consent to separate them.
Okay, well, we have two people. We don't have a consensus to separate it. We have a motion and a second. Lanay, please call Laurel.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
I'm a no to all the works completed.
Kamarowski?
I'm a no to all the works completed, should be robust.
Barham?
Yes, and we'll have the most robust policy and notification system in the whole state when this is all done.
Okay.
Anderson?
And I'm a yes and look at that, Steve Schwartz just voted for parental rights and notification and Kamarowski just voted no.
Out of context, 100%. Just so the community knows, it's out of context.
You're trolling as a board president and that's highly unprofessional. Don't take us out of context.
Watch the social media post.
I'm just funny, that's all.
Community, I hope you're listening to this nonsense.
Hey, I'm here all night. Next is, we're down to general public comments. Do we have general public comments?
We have two, Josh Shirley followed by Upne.
I have to start by apologizing to Laurel Thatcher. I misquoted, it is, well-behaved women seldom make history. I need to get the record straight on that one. We're going back to the expression, the freedom of speech. Dr. Anderson, I wanna say thank you. I didn't understand that the first reading, that this was just a conversation starter. I really appreciate that methodology. One other aspect, this is a little more nuanced, and it goes to the problem between security and freedom and it goes to the masks, the outline of masks for these protests. I don't like the idea of wearing masks at school because you don't know who's on campus. This is in the policy, Steve, the one that she pulled. Yeah, but I just wanna kind of include in the conversation. I think we need to know who's on campus, but we don't need outside agitators coming into our campuses being a part of these protests. I know, we all can see how small bad apples are causing big problems. But I want you guys to be conscious dystopian future. Protests are being filmed by governments and cameras, which we have on our campuses. They are using in certain authoritarian countries facial recognition. And their countries have large databases that they're building on these people in these protests. And they're establishing, let's just pick a hot-button one, if you had an LGBTQ protest, well, you would, the government could then figure out all the people that show up and file them, categorize them, and then later on, use that information to re-educate them. So, I understand about not letting them wear masks. I do see an Orwellian future of artificial intelligence identifying people and our government collecting all that data together. There are signs that it's happening. And so, I would just, your government level could control those camera feeds and who gets them. In your policy, I hope you think about the future of what technology will bring about how you write the policy. I'd rather my kid be anonymous at a protest versus the government knowing that, hey, my kid supported XYZ. I did want to compliment the board. I actually really appreciate the policies. Your conduct is actually getting better and I appreciate the work you guys are putting in. The circus isn't here because you guys are doing the hard work correctly. It's getting boring and that's everything I'd hoped it was gonna be. And I really appreciate all five of your efforts, I really do. Your insights, your work, the love you put into these kids, thank you.
Upne?
Good evening, sorry I'm not prepared today. I would like to comment a little bit on Title IX and when it was passed. And I think a lot of us have forgotten what it used to be like in 1967, where the first person who ran the Boston Marathon was actually held back. She did not have the opportunity to run. She trained with the men's team and she ran the Boston Marathon, registered as herself, as KV Schweitzer. And people did try to stop her when she was running, when they discovered it was a female running in the Boston Marathon. And the coach tried to get her off. There's a whole story that's published. It is Title IX month, I think we should all read up on history. It was passed in 1972 by President Richard Nixon. And then there were guidelines, again, published specifically for athletics in 1975 by President Gerald Ford. And that is up, that document is up, anybody can go read up on the Gerald Ford Museum. I highly suggest that we go read it. And then we talk a lot about civics. We should understand what government, what branch of government performs what function. Department of Justice is an executive branch. They cannot decide the constitutionality of laws. It's the part of the courts. It's not the job of her to learn to decide whether a law is constitutional or not. She can generate, her job is to enforce federal laws. If she thinks somebody's breaking the law, she can sue the state. We do not need to get ourselves involved in their feud. Once they settle it, we can decide, we get the guidance, we move forward. I know people have very strong opinions and thoughts about like, you know, how we should be, how sports should be conducted. Title IX just requires equal funding, not equal funding actually, if you read the documentation, equal opportunities. If you're giving a locker room to the boys, the girls also need to have it. If you're giving money or buses to the boys' football team, you also need to give it to the girls' cheer team. I think we can start over there since we're celebrating Title IX month to see whether we have that sort of funding available or not. That would be a great celebration for Title IX this month, to check how the games are being funded and so on. And thank you.
All right, that's it. Do we have a negotiations update?
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Most of TVA negotiations team is actually currently on summer break, so we'll likely meet at the beginning of the next school year. We'll be meeting with the CSCEA negotiations team on July 7th and July 28th. I do wanna point out to the community that the board approved a few items that they related to CSCEA MOUs. One of them is for student workers, interns in the CTE childcare pathway with our basis program. And we've actually been trying to get that off the ground for a few years now. So, I just wanna thank CSCEA leadership, Valerie Hollins and Ruby Alvarado, and the work of our Director of Classified, Ms. Tiffany Martinez, and of course, the Governing Board of Education because that's a big deal for our students and we're so excited about that. And I know it's gonna be extremely beneficial for our kids, so thank you, everyone.
All right, then we have general board comments. Let's go in, we usually go in voting order, correct? Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, having a really busy-
Yeah, having a really busy trustee area, seven schools, and I was only able to get to four celebrations. I was at Red Hawk and Jackson. I'm sorry, could not get to Pabba, Tony Tobin, or Vail Ranch. I was at Gardner for the, it was an amazing, Mr. McKee did a great job. Really amazing. Our kids, our staff, everybody just did a terrific job. And it's just great to celebrate at the end of the year, to celebrate how much our children have achieved. I know we've been talking a little bit about student achievement. Some of the scores are coming in. I've talked to a lot of teachers, and they say the kids are making amazing progress. I'm really anxious to see what's going to be out on the dashboard when things come out in November. So, I wish all our teachers, just wanted to thank you to all our staff, teachers and classified staff for the great work they do and well-deserved summer vacation coming up. Rest, recharge, enjoy, spend time with your family, get yourself healthy so you're ready for the next school year. And I want to thank our cabinet and administration for all the work that they've done this year. I think it's been a great school year. Every time I visit a school, people seem to be happy, engaged, the kids are involved, and it looks like we're moving along in a, in a very positive way. And I also want to thank the parents, of course, for all their help, and especially the PTAs at my school who do a great job of raising funds and supporting our teachers and kids.
Congratulations to all of our TVUSD students and their families. This is my favorite time of the year, and I hope that a lot of you caught the walk of gratitude that I believe Jimmy captured, and that's when seniors return to their childhood campus and they're greeted by our youngest students. I really enjoyed seeing those moments, and I know a lot of our parents appreciated that. To our TVUSD employees and retirees, it was a lot of fun to help celebrate with you and ring the bell as you move on to the next chapter in your life. So, congrats to you. It was exciting to cheer on so many of our CTE degree completers and encourage them in their career aspirations as they come one step closer to graduating. Really appreciated being a part of that ceremony. I'd like to applaud Brian Pastor and all those involved in our new e-bike program. Thank you for providing additional support and protection for our students who utilize these. I'm also honored to be involved in the development of the Watch Dogs Task Force Initiative to expand the program district-wide. I know Taran has been at Alamos and is moving this next year, but he has provided an outstanding example of leadership and service, and he's willing to give across the district. So, I'm so excited to be a part of that. I think it'll be an amazing team to oversee the expansion of volunteers and additional expertise needed to replicate the program. Safety is a big issue, and if we have parents willing and able in their schedule to be part, that is a great aspect of safety that doesn't require a huge budget, but a heart of priority to say, I want to be with our kids on campus and do what I can. Attending the CSBA Coast to Coast Federal Advocacy Training and Conference in Washington, DC, gave me the unique opportunity to discuss the needs of TVUSD's special education students, examine key policy issues surrounding nutrition and broadband technology, and learn more about the intersection of public education policy and politics. Meeting one-on-one with Congressman Darryl Isa and Dr. Komroski gave us excellent opportunities to ask the real questions about maintaining robust funding for Title I, II, III, IV, and V, and how they'll provide essential components for academic success. With our special education policy, or student population, excuse me, at approximately 20% of the district, this was an important opportunity to build relationships on the hill. And when you have their ear and you hear someone like the congressman say, we're coming to you for perspective, it counts. And at TVUSD, we're going to arrange for Darryl Isa to come to the campus and spend time with our student leaders and have opportunities to answer questions. I don't know how much time I have, but I want to say, when it comes to parental rights, community, I want you to know that I've worked tirelessly on parental rights, the Critical Race Theory Resolution, all of these things. And if, if we make a decision for a certain reason, you need to know, there could be a sleight of hand. I will continue to delineate where I stand, but just know, I've been in the trenches for a long time, and will continue to fight for what is right.
Dr. Komroski?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so for parental rights, I was disappointed tonight because I wanted to move the needle. And I said this when we first, you know, got re-elected back in December, but then specifically on the board workshop. Moving the needle in parental notification means the most robust policies all at once. We are now on our fourth iteration of this. It is, it is a lot of time, a lot of district energy, a lot of money. This could have been, I mean, my advice wasn't taken, is to take all these 16 items that we had two or three board meetings, you know, ago, and give them to a lawyer to sift through them. Again, though, we're on our fourth iteration. There is a reason me and Mrs. Wiersma are not voting now. We have been told that certain things will come back in the future and have not come back. So, honestly, we'll see what the three other board members do. It was kind of interesting how their things were voted in tonight and not me and Mrs. Wiersma's. And it's not our policies. It's for the benefit of students. This whole thing about, let's stick to the students, you're dang right, Mr. Schwartz. Mental health is a massive crisis in our country, especially post-COVID. Not even just suicide, but depression and anxiety levels are at an all-time high. They might be getting better since post-COVID, but that is what I wanted to emphasize with the mental health policy at Pacentior Melinda. Who cares who wrote it? It's been legally vetted, and it stood the test of time, battle-tested with lawyers and states. Just saying. Graduation, holy crap, awesome. Temecula Valley High School, TMS, Anne Ranch Vista, and alternative schools. Got to go to all three of those. Really awesome to hear the student testimonies, to see them walk on stage. Oh, my gosh. And, and just to see our vision statement at the school district be, you know, being played out in real time. These are not just students graduating. They are and will be our future leaders. So, I'm really stoked for all them. They're out and enjoying the summer right now, causing havoc. Great. They deserve it. I mean, and I mean that in a good way. They're just celebrating. They're academic excellence and just the character building that they've achieved in this K through 12 school system. So, shout out to them. The CSBA trip, yes. Here we go. Trying to cram all this in. One of the things we talked about was Individuals with Disabilities Education, IDEA. We met with our Congressman Darryl Isa. He's hugely on board with no restrictions to funding with our Title I funds, II, III, IV. He said, as well as the Speaker of the House, keep in mind, this was dated back in April. He even said that he thought President Trump was for a non-reduction of funds in, related to IDEA, which I thought was really good, and then specifically the Title I. We talked about nutrition and school meal funding. Yes, a lot of our students get free meals, but there's also a lot of meals being thrown out into the trash. We talked about cybersecurity and AI for our teachers. I am a teacher advocate when it comes for this. Yes, it may help you, but I don't want the students being infiltrated with this unless this goes out to a community. So, anyways, trying to report it out. You can talk to me in private. I'll give you all the details. But I guess I ran out of time. Is there an extension on time?
You can ask for an extension.
Yeah, I'd like an extension. This is ridiculous. We should be able to report out without being rushed.
Would the board like to give Dr. Komroski another minute?
Granted.
Yeah, there you go.
Let me backtrack. Cybersecurity, so that our student information is secure and not breached and compromised. One of the things I like about CSBA is that when we went, you, you meet with a lot of school board members from other districts throughout the state, and there are many things that we agree on, and we work together collaboratively, whether there's, trust me, conservative, neutral, independent, liberal values. All that gets put at the door with many of these issues when we collaborate together and with superintendents, and we meet with these congressmen, congressmen, and we learn about how to effectively advocate for our students in Title I funding, all the way through Title IV, cybersecurity, AI, all of that. It's awesome. And that being said, if there is professional development for school board members, all school board members should go to these events. But since, and I'm going to double down on this, Mr. Barham, since you said there's a new mindset, you should apply it to yourself and the four members that want to go to CSBA, because we were told that we can't have these funds. And me and Mrs. Wiersma was, we were almost shamed in going to CSBA Washington, but then you turn around and say, but you guys can't go, but we're going to go. It contradicts your entire message on finances and your new mindset. I just want to make that clear.
Time. Mr. Schwartz isn't going either. Mr. Barham? Yes, so, so you have four minutes now?
Yeah, but I was going to take three right now. And then I'll take my minute as I go around.
Okay.
Okay. So, about a month ago, I had the pleasure of being given a tour of our food service operations with Brad, Director of Nutritional Services, and Mrs. Lash. We traveled to an elementary, middle, and high school. There I was able to learn about and see all of the delicious and nutritionally compliant food options available to our students. The students receive a well-balanced meal. They love the food, as evidenced by their empty plates at the end of lunch. In addition, it's amazing how these food service workers get hundreds of plates served in such a short amount of time while keeping the kitchens cleaned and organized for the next day. Well done, Nutritional Services. I want to comment on the sense of community witnessed at the graduation ceremonies at Chaparral High School and Dame Middle School. White and black students, Hispanic and Asian, Jewish and Christian, Muslim and Hindu, all in support of one another. It was absolutely amazing how these kids cheer each other on. It's crazy. All in support of one another as they receive their graduation certificates and diplomas. It was a strong reminder of what was almost lost and how our community should be, should be functioning in unity and harmony. We, as adults, need to look to the innocence of these kids as a reminder of how things should be. Although we cannot release specific student achievement data to the public until October, it is coming in gradually and looks very positive. The TVUSD community will see some scores that I have only seen a few times in my career since reviewing this data over the past decade. This is a testament to the great work of all of our district employees, from teaching to custodial work to district leadership. All of you make a significant contribution promoting the distinguished reputation. Temecula is held for years. This is a good reason for a taxpayer to continue to willingly invest in Temecula schools in order to keep our community safe and prospering, as well as to maintain and increase the value of our properties. Citizens of Temecula, we are on the way up, in the words of our superintendent. We are winning, and hope you will join with us in keeping this positive momentum going.
Thank you. Did you want another minute?
I'll take it later.
Do you want another minute?
My mind.
Okay. I am going to just comment on the cuff that I am surprised that two board members voted no to provide parents and guardians the opportunity to request that their child be excused from specific instructional content and school activities, including parts of curriculum and activities like the use of shared locker rooms based on their religious beliefs. And it's, I had a conversation with a well-known local pastor, and I said, I think they're going to vote no on this. And he said, no way. And you guys did. And I said, they're going to say it's not good enough. And I even used the word robust. It's not robust enough. And you guys just voted no on religious accommodation for bathroom and locker, shared locker use. Same thing with mental health. And the, the thing about this is, is I, I said, no burden of proof. We're not going to put a burden on our principles to, for the parents to come and have to prove themselves worthy of an accommodation. So, so the request, the, the statement was no burden of proof. If, if a child has either a mental health or religious request for privacy, we're going to grant that. And I, I thought it would be unanimous. So, that's my only board comments, is that I am actually kind of shocked right now that we did, that two members did not grant religious accommodation for students that want privacy when they change their clothes.
Can I have a minute? It's not going to be a minute, and it's not a board policy. I just want to comment on the fact that the Temecula City Council disbanded the Ready Commission. I have written to the mayor, Mayor Calphus, to my city councilman, Matt Ron. Despicable. The one place where our minority community was recognized, where we recognized women, where we recognized the Hispanic community, the AIP community, the African-American community, the Jewish community, where we recognized people who are minorities in our community. They had a chance to come, be proud, get a proclamation, talk about their heritage. And I am just shocked and disgusted that our city council did that. And I would hope that those of you of goodwill will write to your Temecula city councilman and tell them that you disagree with what they did. Thank you.
Mr. Barham, you get, Mrs. Wiersma, you'd like your last minute? We'll go in order. If no one goes, then we're going to, if no one goes.
So, I will go ahead and go, and there is a very specific reason. You just strategically held out for that. What you just shared was gaslighting, and we made it clear on this dais why we were not voting it through. I asked for it to be separated because I do agree with the accommodations. I do agree with some aspects, but you bundled it together like an omnibus bill. And I have clearly stated that what I was looking for in the heart of this policy was not there. I have the grace and the faith to believe that you're going to continue to move forward, but in my jurisdiction as a trustee, it's up to me to use wisdom and discernment to wait. So, that is not the context of the full story. Mr. Barham, I'm assuming you want to go last to continue to be a bully, as you have to me both behind the scenes and on this dais. I would ask that we get to move past all of this. With differing opinions, that's fine, but do not question. President Alexander, I ask you, do not question our allegiance to parents because we were here long before you were. And that has never changed.
Mr. Barham, you get your final minute, and then we're done with general public comments.
I think we have done a great job as a board in promoting parental rights and parental notification. You two have done nothing up here tonight but criticize us for doing that work. And I want to remind you, you both failed. You did not bring forward anything that succeeded and cost this district hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Point of order with no context. You shouldn't be able to rebut.
There's no point of order here. I want my time. Yeah, I want my time.
Well, they're not conservatives either.
Yeah. A liberal's going to say that religious accommodation, so girls can...
You and Mr. Barham lied to the public. If the public knew what you really were doing, they would have never voted you in.
This is, this is what...
You want to troll me?
I'm not trolling you. I'm just, I'm stating facts.
Mr. Barham, take your last 30 seconds.
I don't want, I, I want my minute back.
Okay, get your full minute back.
Yeah, and I'm going to say it again. You two brought nothing forward. You failed on every single thing. CRT, parental notification.
You're witnessing a liar.
Point of order, let him finish.
You, you failed on everything. You never listened to attorneys. You cost this district hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Thanks for lying again.
Okay, no, there's no lie. See, this is, you go ahead and defend yourself. In my board comments, you're out of order. Okay, you're out of order. I did not interrupt you. I want my time back. Okay? And I'm, yeah.
Go ahead, finish your comments.
I want my, yeah. It's just, it's, it is the truth, and I'm happy that everybody sees it, okay? Because it, it's a fact, because we are revisiting everything that you failed on, both of you, and, and bringing it across the finish line with no attorney fees, okay? Because we're smart enough to do it. That's it.
Okay, Superintendent, any comments?
With the brilliant help of Mr. Evans, we put together a video that hopefully captures some of the great successes that we've achieved this year. As we approach the close of another school year, it is time to reflect on the incredible progress our students have made and to express my deepest gratitude to each of you for being a vital part of their academic journey. Twenty-four, twenty-five has been a year of growth with our students building important skills, both in and out of the classroom. From the first day of school to the final... I would like to take a special moment to congratulate our graduates, whether they are moving on to middle school, high school, or embarking on new adventures in college. in college or a new career, their achievements are a reflection of the dedication, support, and guidance they have received from their family and the hard work of our outstanding educators. We are so excited to see what the future holds for each one of them. Furthermore, we took significant strides this year in our commitment to bring strategic plans to each school, as well as creating a district-wide strategic plan, including evaluation documents aligned to a precise set of performance data. We look forward to sharing this valuable information with our TVUSD community at the end of July. We are humbled and grateful you have chosen and believe in our TVUSD schools. Every individual student and their family members are welcome here. Together as a community, we are elevating experiences, opportunities, and each other. Whether you are a student, a parent guardian, a certificated or classified staff member, or a community member, the future successes of our TVUSD schools are essential to attracting and retaining a solid employment base, successful economic development, preparing our children to become future community leaders, and sustaining the quality of life we all appreciate. I am proud and honored to be on this journey with you.
All right. So, the next regular open session business meeting of the Governing Board of Education is scheduled for June 24th, 2025. The meeting is adjourned on Tuesday...